Welcome everybody. Thanks for coming to City Council. Uh, I'm gonna call us to order. The first thing we're gonna do is turn off our cell phone ringers. The next thing we're gonna do is remember that the land where we're doing our work has been inhabited long before our people came, and that the descendants of the people who have been here are still here among us, and uh, our, our community is rich and diverse, and may we see the world through those eyes. Let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
The agenda indicates that we will now recess to consider urban renewal, but we do have sort of uh, emerging topic, and I see that there's a, a lot of folks here to speak to it, so to attempt to waste everyone's time as little as possible. We're gonna have business from the audience very first thing. Some folks have signed up, and there's another sheet. It looks like Abigail's tending, so if, if you would like to speak to us, but you haven't signed up, please go ahead and do so at this time. We're gonna start with John Boonstra, followed by Kevin Walsh. John, you've done this before, but if you can make the circle turn green, and then if you could take three minutes and tell, take three minutes and tell us what you'd like us to note, John.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor Blacker and members of the council, good evening. I'm John Boonstra, 1372 Rossin Road in Hood River. Some, since members of your constituency first called on you to pass a resolution for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza, time has shown no mercy. Thousands more innocent civilians have been killed, thousands more have been displaced and uprooted, uh, more without housing, more families separated, more people without health care, more expen- more experiencing escalating conditions of malnutrition and hunger. As British, Irish playwright George Bernard Shaw reminds us, "The worst sin towards our fellow creatures is to be indifferent to them." That's the essence of inhumanity. I, along with many of your constituents, wrestle with our complicity and struggle with how to say no to how to say no to this persistent genocide. What is needed are public leaders taking an active voice. Because the most dangerous threat of all is silence. The most dangerous threat is to think that our local voices do not make a difference in the world. At the conclusion of your meeting, February twenty-sixth, the mayor invited any of you who had an interest in moving this issue forward to submit something, and he would place it on the council agenda. There was some mention that the city of Seattle had a resolution worth looking at. So I sent an adapted and an updated version of it to each of you last week. I, I brought copies here again to prompt your discernment. While we have an admirable tradition in this council affirming our basic moral values of inclusion, of justice, and of human rights, I invite you to go further than that. I invite you to show us what our values look like in public policy. I invite you again to put forward a resolution on ceasefire that adds our names to a growing momentum, including this past week, the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners. I believe that our federal policymakers need to know that we find it unconscionable to airlift food aid to Gaza at the same time as we provide billions of tax dollars, as, uh, billions of tax dollars to Israel for military hardware and weaponry. I invite you again to not go silent. Let's not get caught on the wrong side of history by saying nothing. I ask you to please put forth a ceasefire resolution at your next possible city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Kevin, and then Miranda.
Hi, my name is Kevin Walsh. I live at nine twelve Fifth Street. I'm a retired physician. I'm here to invite you to use the position that you have, the bully pulpit that you have, to send a message to our state legislators, to our US senators, to the president, that this community feels that this genocide is wrong. I respect the work that you all do for our community, and I respect your feelings that your work should be limited to that. But I feel you have a larger opportunity, and I feel a responsibility. And as John has, I'm inviting you to use your position to make a statement for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Miranda, and then Rebecca Ross.
Good evening. My name is Miranda Burmese Golar. I live in Hood River. I pastor Spirit of Grace Lutheran Methodist Church on Tucker Road, just outside of city limits. Since October seventh and as of March tenth, at least thirty-one thousand four hundred and sixty Palestinians have been killed, including twelve thousand three hundred children. Eight thousand Palestinians are currently missing, and over seventy-seven thousand are injured and without access to proper medical treatment, to say nothing of the inhumane living conditions. In Israel, one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine people have been killed and at least eighty-seven hundred injured. I say these numbers not in comparison to one another, but to represent the pervasive impact of this unjust slaughter of the people of Palestine. A month ago, we approached you as our city representatives and asked you to consider a ceasefire resolution, which you unanimously agreed to do so. Two weeks later, we returned and shared with you why we felt this was important and relevant to the people of Hood River. You listened to people in favor, against, and conflicted about the resolution, and ultimately, not one of you stood in favor of it, allowing it to instead die without emotion or vote. We were not allowed to speak to concerns, and no effort was made on behalf of the city council to continuing, to continue this conversation with us in a meaningful way, despite a general agreement that what is happening in Palestine is horrific and unacceptable, and that a ceasefire is necessary. I had hoped that since this seemed to be a shared belief among us, that if you were not willing to support our previous resolution, that you might be willing to consider an adopted version, similar to the one passed in Seattle that was referenced in the meeting. Or if you were in agreement, this is not a city issue, that you would have the conviction to at least release a statement saying so. Instead, there has been silence, which in the face of injustice is unacceptable. And so I am here tonight to remind you that as long as there is silence from the city council on this matter, there will not be silence from the people. We will continue to show up here, to use our voices to speak out and to stand in solidarity with the people of Palestine as they watch their people slaughtered and their land and history wrenched from their hands more so every day. I would like to invite and challenge you tonight and ask you that before you take up this issue again, you come and be present with us at one of our community action gatherings this Friday at four thirty PM, as I heard just before the meeting that councillor Poulsen already plans on doing so. Come and be present with your constituents. Come and listen to our songs and our chants and our prayers for peace. Come and see the people who drive by and honk and wave and shout with us. Come and hear the stories of why this matters to us in this time and this place. And if you do so, and you are still willing to stand and say this is not important enough, not relevant enough, not a good enough use of city resources, then at least I will know that you have truly heard us and saw us, and didn't just put your heads down and hope we would go away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miranda. Rebecca, and then Hapi.
My name is Rebecca Rossin. I live at one three six eight Rossin Road. I'd like to thank all of you for your service to our city, and I'm so proud of so many decisions that you and your predecessors have made to support justice, acknowledging people who have come before us when you start your meetings, acknowledging the importance of sanctuary for our brothers and sisters that live near our borders, acknowledging in the past the importance of our Japanese brothers and sisters who were interred during World War Two. And I would like to invite you to take this opportunity as government representatives to try to add your voice to what needs to be a really rapidly growing "Just Please Say No" in the face of our government, contributing to this genocide. I'm a nurse practitioner. I've worked here for thirty-five years at Providence, and I've been on multiple medical trips, often after med- after medical um, care is necessary after disasters. This is a human-made disaster. What we're doing is appalling, and I would just ask all of you to say "not in our name," not in the name of us as citizens, not in the name of Hood River. I've talked to colleagues who are, are responding to this disaster, and there's, there, it's unprecedented. They've never seen anything like this in their experience. I think it's especially important that today is the beginning of the holy time of Ramadan for our Muslim brothers and sisters, and uh, it's an opportunity why we don't have a ceasefire at this time and during this really important holy moment is beyond my comprehension. And I'm just grateful to all of you for listening. Thanks.
Thank you, Rebecca. Hapi, and then Megan Ring. I'm gonna let Megan, we're gonna stay on topic, and then Hussein.
Avi Koye, I live in seven one four Pascate Avenue. Born and raised Israeli, proud to be part of the Jewish community in Hood River. City Council, I'm flabbergasted that you open a Pandora box and allow antisemites such as Pastor Miranda Burns-Gold to stand here and tell you that ceasefire is required in Gaza. Ceasefire existed in Gaza till the seventh of July, or seventh of October. And you may forget what happened on seventh of October, so I'll remind you. Gazans invaded the state of Israel, raped systematically, raped women, killed them, beheaded children in front of their family. And now you are asking me, why is Israel invading Gaza? We need to get rid of Hamas. I'm not going to spend too much time here because three minutes will just not be enough for it. I can tell you stories that will take hours because I was born and raised there. I served in the IDF. I was injured twice. I've been involved in all these skirmishes. If you have time, please go to YouTube and look for videos by Noah Tishby. I'll repeat it, Noah, N-O-A, Tishby, T-I-S-H-B-Y. You'll get some insight of the Israeli side. I haven't heard a single person here condemning Hamas for the terrorist organization for firing thousands of rockets on civilians, murdering women, keeping captive babies that are less than one year old. This antisemitism must stop, and the city council should pass a resolution condemning any antisemitism in this city, not a ceasefire in Gaza till Hamas is eliminated. Please, if you cannot pass a resolution to stop antisemitism in the city, or at least have a public declaration that antisemitism in this city is unacceptable, I will have to take the next step, which will be requiring the city council to pass a resolution demanding to stop any antisemitism in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Avi. Hussein, and then, I'm sorry, I don't know your, is it Ibtisam?
Yes, you are.
Good evening. I'm not here to upset anybody, and I'm sorry if there's people who are upset and people who are not. We are all here to talk for peace, no matter where we're coming from, where we were born, who we served, and where. Atrocities have been happening, not from just the, I'm responding a little bit to Mr. Avi, not just from the Hamas side. It's been happening since nineteen forty-eight. People losing their home, their land taken, uh, their farms burnt, their kids put in jail, released after a month, gotten uh, uh, arrested again, put back in jail, just constantly, constantly, constantly. So before we condemn this guy or that guy, we need to look at the history. Like Mr. Avi said, go to YouTube and check Noah. That's fine. We'll go check Noah, but we wanna make sure Noah is not, uh, is not biased. I mean, is not unbiased on just one side. Because what we're seeing right now, the truth is coming out. The forty beheaded children, they're still not a proof of it. The rape of the women, not a proof of it. Uh, the, the killing that happened, the two-hundred-some people that were dead at the scene when Hamas attacked were not killed by Hamas. They were killed by the bombing of Israel because Israel enacted the Hannibal Act to shoot anybody, no matter what kind of people are in the car, whether they Israelis or Palestinians. So that's why you have all these dead people. Go check your story. The Harretts, the Harretts newspaper just, just, uh, last week, uh, translated the story of that seventeen car bombed and killed by the Israeli people. So here's what I have to say right now. In light of what is happening in this world with no corner spared of wars, could that are troubles? We, as the people of conscience, in this only destructive world where our leaders have become more vicious, war hungers, power seekers, money starving, we must stand for what is rightful for every country to live in peace with no persecution, no death, no destruction. A lasting peace in the Middle East will be positive for all the Arabs, including Israel, uh, where all the world prob- uh, and will solve the problem of a lot of, uh, I'm sorry, in Palestine, will solve a lot of problems and expose a lot of truths about a lot of leaders and bring joy to millions of people in that area. Peace must be built on trust and love for humanity with that conditions where enemies will learn to live side by side. It doesn't matter who you are. Please consider the resolution for ceasefire and please add it to your agenda. God bless.
Thank you. Thank you. Ibtisam, and then Amira, and then I saw Susan signed up. Is there anyone else that can you check? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ibtisam Salman. I want to thank you for letting me stand here and speak. I am a resident of Hood River since two thousand and five. I am a wife and a mother. I lived my whole childhood and adulthood in wars. I witnessed many horrific scenes, and I am familiar with what's happening in Palestine and what happened to Palestinians. I see this is not a war. I am certain that the three minutes that I'm giving are not enough to talk about all the killing and murdering and destruction that is happening in Gaza right now. Yes, it's killing and murdering of children, women, civilians. This is a genocide. The Israeli military released drone footage that shows that with their technology, they can see clearly who's in the location that they are targeting. Yet, they are still bombing homes with civilians, destroying hospitals, universities, churches, and mosques. I learned that the weapons that are being used in Gaza are the most advanced weapons in existence. And they are being tested on Gaza's civilians and being used for the very first time. The children of Gaza, which half of the population are being bombarded with the most advanced weapons. They are being starved, dehydrated, and scumming to diseases. This is not war. This is an ethnic cleansing of families and cities. I don't think there is any way for us to really understand the scope of the human suffering in Gaza. Every form of human suffering that could possibly existing in this whole world existed in Gaza right now. The needs, this needs to stop. Please, do anything in your power to put an end to these crimes. Thank you. Peace be upon all of you.
Amira, and then Susan.
Well, again, I really appreciate all of you listening to us again. And um, my name's Amira Malak. I've lived in the gorge since two thousand and two. Um, I'm not as prepared as last time, but I still feel compelled to come. I can't be silent. Doesn't feel human to not be, to be silent. So um, I'm here again to speak about a demand for a ceasefire and ask that you reconsider and look at the new resolution. Um, I'd like to share a little bit more about myself. Um, especially as, uh, at the last meeting, you clearly saw there were many of us who spoke, but one of the gentlemen clearly targeted and named me, and I think made assumptions about me. I don't know if you could feel that energy coming off of him. I certainly did. It shook me. And so I just wanna share a little bit about my background. Um, my dad is from Egypt and was raised Coptic Christian. My mom is of European ancestry and was raised a Christian scientist. I was raised to choose my own way and value and respect all life. My dad, uh, was so, uh, against killing that he refused to, uh, fight when he was drafted after being, uh, made an American citizen. So he was a conscientious objector and studied to be a medic instead in the army. Um, I spent childhood in Kuwait, Egypt, and Spain and international schools with over fifty nationalities and multiple religions in the student body. I come to you not as a representative of a particular culture, but as a human being who values all life. I listened to the discussion at the end of the last council meeting and wanted to address the question of why should we make a statement about this particular conflict when there are so many happening in the world, and there are always conflicts happening in the world? My answer is because our tax dollars are funding this one. Doctors who pledge to do no harm, teachers who love their students, wonderful business community members, we are all complicit. We are all literally funding and signing our names to missiles. Every single person in this room has helped cause the death of somebody in Gaza. What is happening in Gaza is sheer brutality, and yes, does meet the definition of genocide. I looked up aspects of it, and one of the prohibitive acts is deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction. Um, some of the guidance identifies subjecting a group of people to a subsistence diet, systematic expulsion from homes, and the reduction of essential medical services below minimum requirement. That's rising to genocide. The list includes lack of proper housing, clothing, hygiene, and medical care, or excessive worker physio- physical exertion. There are very few hospitals left. Multiple hospitals have been bombed. Um, also placing land under a comprehensive blockade, cutting access to food, medical supplies, electricity, gas, internet, stopping all movement. There is no way to get out of Gaza. They, and I mean, I'm disappointed in my own country, my, half my heritage in Egypt, that they are not allowing Gazans to, to leave, and they're, you have to bribe officials to get out. It's the normal time. Okay. Um, cultural genocide involves the eradication and destruction of cultural artifacts. Um, the archives in Gaza have been destroyed with The archives in Gaza have been destroyed with Palestinian heritage, complete family lineages. Families have been wiped out. There is no time left to continue. This is beyond what is considered like defending yourself. Gaza is being flattened and wiped out, and that is the goal. I'm not the only one who feels this way. The 44,000 members, 440,000 members of the Jewish Voices for Peace have been leading actions demanding a ceasefire with rallying cries of "Not in our name" across the US. And we as American taxpayers can make the same call. Please, at least make a statement. That's the bare minimum we can do. Please, "Not in our name." This isn't the solution. Thank you.
Susan, and is anyone else intending to speak on this topic? Thank you.
Hi, Susan Crowley, Hood River. I gave you naturally a bunch of materials, packets, just to look at when you have a chance. Oh, great. Okay. And I listened to, watched your video of your last discussion at the end of your meeting. I was incredibly impressed. It was very thoughtful, very, it was quite prolonged. I realize you don't have much time for everything, which was mentioned over and over. But it was a really good discussion, and what I heard coming from that was a sense that you'd like to incorporate this, perhaps if you can, into other things that you've done. And how does it relate to other things? So I went through your resolutions, and there's a copy of at least one of them there. There are others. But the main one that I found was 2913, which is the recognition of indigenous rights that we probably all remember. And the tragedy here is that both Israelis and Palestinians consider themselves among the dispossessed. For Palestinians, they were basically pushed off their lands. Their homes were in some cases destroyed. They certainly, most of the time, weren't allowed to come back to them in 1948. From Israeli perspective, this is land given to them by God, and they are basically, from time immemorial, the owners of this property. So they both view themselves as dispossessed. But what we have here is a situation in which there are 30,000 dead. That's probably an underestimate. About two thirds of those are women and children, probably not members of Hamas, probably not active fighters. Multnomah County, by the way, just passed a resolution for a ceasefire about five days ago. So what you have here is this resolution that you did pass. There are others that do relate. And what you do in that was very interesting. You basically endorsed and acknowledged the Human, the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. And I've got copies of that, certain pages, excerpts in the packet that you have. And what that does is guarantee the right to just about what's being affected against Palestinians in this case, to the tune of 30,000 deaths at this point, and it's climbing. You know the horrors. You've watched the news, as we all have. Palestinians are entitled to these things. No dispossession of lands. Look at what's happened to them. They, we have an obligation under this UN declaration, which I believe we've endorsed, to encourage and promote good relations among different cultural groups in a society. There can be no destruction of culture. Look what Amira just talked about. Look what you've heard about destruction of hospitals, schools, universities. No dispossession of resources, no forced population transfer. Say, population of 2.2 million, about 2 million have been pushed out of where they live. No relocation by definition. That's what's going on, and you can call it voluntary. Do you want to be bombed? Do you want to relocate? So it's true, this is the important point, sorry. It's true that Biden will not be picking up the phone, but Wyden will be. We pay for this. Wyden has a strong and important voice in Congress. Wyden is Jewish. He has a natural desire to be sure to, both sides are acknowledged. This language can acknowledge offenses to both sides. You've used it before. It is a good basis for a new resolution specifically referencing the situation in Gaza and balance it as you choose is appropriate. But it's already been endorsed by this council. This council has already paid attention to it. Every time you open a meeting, you pay attention to the principles of this resolution by the UN. So please acknowledge it again in this context.
Thank you.
Jen, is there anyone online who has signed up to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, so I knew the folks were going to be coming tonight. John, as he indicated, sent us a copy of the Seattle model. Several of our councillors worked over the week and prepared a suggestion for a resolution. So I have copies of the council-generated resolution in front of me. I have copies of the Seattle model resolution in front of me. Susan has suggested that we model a resolution on the Indigenous Peoples' Day Declaration. I suggest that we honor everyone's time and not let this linger on, that we be a little bit more clear in our message about what we intend to do and not do. I suggest that we spend a few minutes discussing this now. How does that suit the council?
Well, I don't want to waste anyone's time, having not seen at least the council-generated resolution and reluctant to discuss it without reading it.
Thank you.
I don't want to speak for Councila Rivera, but she's not absent, or she's absent today. And I know she's interested in this, in this topic as well. It's just something to consider.
I think talking about, are we, you know, what's our next step is great. I'm loathe to wordsmith at the dais in front of these good people just because they would, it'd be maybe sausage. And I think that what we care about is the meal that comes out at the end. So I think my opinion was clear last time. I think that calling on things that we have done in the past in the light of this current tragedy is a smart thing. If, if everyone's, if we want wordsmith a new resolution, I'm not positive it's a great idea, but I understand and I would support that.
Great. I don't have anything to add without seeing what materials, new materials have been put together. I haven't had time to read any of it.
Yeah. Doug, okay. Sorry. Thank you. Tim, anything to add at this time?
Well, I would just concur with Doug about Gladys's presence. Discussing is fine. I think voting, I would like to have Gladys here.
Great.
Yeah, and I, and also I'd like to, I'm aware of the resolution that Tim Gladys and I have been working on based on, you know, the House of Representatives, but yeah, have not read these as well. So I don't think it'd be good to wordsmith. I concur.
Great, thank you. Let me ask your opinion about this council. It sometimes is done to say that, all right, we have now taken the public input we are going to take. You're not going to make everybody come down here again and again. And some people have threatened to come every time until we do something, and okay, they can say that. What if we did something that gives us each time to read the Seattle version, the highlighted skeleton from Susan Crowley and the council-generated one, and without further public comment, discuss this at our next meeting? How does that seem?
I mean, the way you're talking about it is as if this was a quasi judicial thing and we're closing a record. But the, I mean, it's public comment. People have a right to continue to come. We're not adding to a record that's, you know, going to go to Luba type thing.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I recognize we can't all meet. Seven of us can't meet and discuss this tomorrow, for example. But those of us that have been working on the resolution, I'm sure we could continue to work on the resolution, incorporate this, and bring something to the council, and ask you for a spot on the agenda for the next time.
Thank you.
I would just point out that Multnomah County took three months to work on theirs. Corvallis worked on it for multiple months, you know, before they came up with this company. So I'm not saying that to delay things. I'm saying that, recognize that it's hard for for the city to find the right words to pull the community together, not just do something quick and be more hurtful than it was at the beginning. So I think that looking at the drafts that we have and being able to have, you know, something where we talk at the next meeting sounds fine to me.
Brad, anything to add?
I concur with Councilor Saunders, and I'd just like to add that we all understand the urgency that the public requests us to act in an expeditious manner. We understand that very well. But yeah, I do agree that they, anyone can come here during public comment and comment about this as much as they wish. That is their right to do so. And yeah, I agree with Councilor Saunders that we should welcome it as well as go through what is the additional materials.
Great, thank you.
I think we should do what you suggested, Mayor, and then put it on the next, next meeting's agenda. That would be my preference. It's not a matter that can wait three months while we wordsmith it, right? It's just not. So that will work.
Thank you.
So that's my preference.
So I'm hearing a majority suggesting it to go on the agenda next time. I am going to encourage people to remember that the same argument made over and over does not necessarily change the outcome. And to be respectful of everyone's time, if it fills the room every time, I become increasingly in favor of, we're not going to talk about this because the important work that we're doing is important work. And Senator Wyden and the US President are also doing important work, and that's their work out there. But if we can't operate our city because we're spending all our time on an extra city topic, that's a problem. I haven't voiced my opinions that much during this process, so, and I'm going to do that now. So I am so mad I could just about spit at what Hamas did and murdered all those people. I am so mad that I could just about spit that Netanyahu thinks a two-state solution is wrong. I am so mad I could just about spit that the idiots in the United Nations in 1948 came up with this solution. I'm so mad I could about spit that the other idiot in Germany in the 40s murdered all those people. I'm so mad I could just about spit that the Pope sent people to the Middle East in their crusades to murder all of those people. Like, it goes so far back, and smarter people than me have not solved this. And this is not what the city government is supposed to do. While we are struggling with the great moral issues of our time, there should be paved roads, and there should be police, and there should be planning, and there should be parks, and there should be snowplows. That's what we're here for. And if you want somebody to believe something else, you can vote for the other guy. So we really have to be careful about what we spend our time on because there are other genocides that we should speak out on as moral people. But that's not what you elected me to do. So. End of my TED Talk. We're going to put this on the agenda for next time. Please do not pack the room on purpose. It just takes more time. I think we've heard a lot of incredibly eloquent language, and I want to celebrate the tone. With almost no exception, it was positive and thoughtful and heartfelt and non-heckling. And I only got called a pathetic terrorist one time. So, thank you very much. Counsel, we have a second one?
Hey, we're going to call the order the Urban Renewal Agency. This is really good.
Make it, make, make it go in the ordinary order. So, to type Megan's.
Right. Calling the order the Urban Renewal Agency meeting for March 11th, 2024. Jen, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the agency?
None.
And no one online either?
Uh, no, you have to know Port Commissar is online.
And no other, just Tim. Okay. Tim, Kevin forgot about you. The first thing on the agenda is consent agenda for February 12th. Will it be consent agenda for February 12th?
All right, well, second.
Any discussions? All those in favor of approving the minutes from February 12th, say yes.
Hi.
All right. And Chair says yes as well. So that passes. Business items. Will, are we ready to go? There's two things on the list.
Thanks to Chair Xan Miller, members of the Urban Renewal Agency Board. Stick with me one minute while I pull up a presentation. Thank you. So tonight we have Urban Renewal Resolution 2024-03. It's the first substantial amendment to the waterfront district, initiating an increase in maximum indebtedness by $2.15 million to a total of $7.9 million. So to begin tonight on just a little history on the Urban Renewal Waterfront District. Its original maximum indebtedness was set in 2008 at $5.75 million. About half of that, a little over half, was dedicated to infrastructure projects, about a third for recreation projects, and then the balance for habitat improvement, business recruitment, and for administrative costs. And since adoption, we've made significant progress on getting through the established projects. Order control measures at the wastewater treatment plant, new industrial roadways, and streetscape improvements along Portway really catalyzed the development that we've seen in the district going from mostly empty lots, empty grass lots when the district was created to now the vibrant waterfront district that we know now. And even the projects that don't have checkmarks on that list there, that some of them, for instance, recreation site improvements were all, were completed just done by the Port of Hood River. But what was not foreseen in 2008 was the state of the major stormwater line that drains the district, built in the 1960s and with development allowed to occur over top. This water, stormwater line is at end of life, and in 2019 suffered a failure that created a sinkhole near the foundation of Hood River Distillers, which is a major business and employer, a major driver of tax increment in the district. We have immediately set to rerouting stormwater around Hood River's distillers and set to obtain as many state and federal grants as we could. But there remains that the entire stormwater line needs to be decommissioned and placed into the right way, which is where utility should be placed. And while Phase One, which decommissioned the failed section of the line, is completed, and Phase Two, which is rerouting where the outfall is, is nearly complete, should be complete any day now. There still remains two more phases, and unfortunately, we just won't know how much this project will ultimately cost until it goes out to bid. Um, so while the, uh. Need, uh, for funding for this project is emerging, uh. Unfortunately, the amount is not yet exactly known, but we do know that, uh, now is our last opportunity to increase the maximum indebtedness of the district. Um, so that is what the substantial amendment before you today does, it increases, uh, the maximum allowable, uh, increments. Uh, that can be done without needing the, uh, pro- affirmative concurrence of overlapping districts you have. Uh, the city council will have the authority to do this on their own, although they must, uh, meet and confer with the districts and do several other. Uh, points of process, which I'll get into later in the presentation. The question naturally goes, uh, comes to, well, what is the, um, effect of this and the length of this district and the impact? Um, to other taxing jurisdictions, so I have a little bit of information on that. So the, um, this is the two thousand and eight projections that this was how much tax increment was originally expected. And that the two thousand and eight waterfront plan was built upon. It, uh, anticipated that tax collections would need to continue through fiscal year, I'm sorry, let's just say twenty twenty-eight, not two thousand and eight. Um, in order to pay back all the debt to fund the projects that were envisioned. Um, this is actual so far. So initially, uh, tax increment grew a little bit slower than the projections, but by, um. FY, uh, um, twenty twenty-one had increased, uh, uh, or by twenty twenty, actually had increased above projections. But in FY twenty twenty-one, we paused collections during COVID to assist overlapping districts, um. Uh, during, during pandemic relief before we knew, uh, that all the federal, uh, relief that would be coming subsequently. So we were out ahead to, to help out the overlapping districts. Uh, tax collection then resumed in FY twenty twenty-two and, uh, inclusive. Of the boundary reductions that were approved last year and inclusive of this maximum indebtedness increase. These are the projections, uh, for tax increment, uh, generation. And, uh, s- and the phasing out of the district after a partial collection in FY, uh, twenty twenty-seven. So inclusive of all those changes, still closing a year earlier than the original projections. Uh, and as far as impact to overlapping districts, the two point, uh, one five million, uh, dollars, um. Uh, will primarily come from, uh, the, the three, in, uh, three entities that, uh, will forego the. Most amount of revenue would be the school district at nearly a million dollars, uh, the county at about a quarter million dollars. And the city about, uh, a little over a half million dollars, although. Um, all education service districts, including the school district, are largely sealeded from any actual revenue loss. Due to statewide, uh, per pupil funding formulas. Um, so this is a summary of what we've done and on, and next steps. So the Urban Renewal, uh, Advisory Committee, uh, talked about this question of the, whether to increase maximum indebtedness. And unanimously supported it and then in concept, this was supported by the Urban Renewal, uh, Agency Board. To, uh, it create this, uh, resolution and bring forward the question. Uh, tonight, you have the, uh, the resolution formally initiating the first substantial amendment to the waterfront district. And, uh, if you approve this tonight, tomorrow we will send out notices to the overlapping districts to begin the. Uh, con- consultant confer period, which is, uh, forty-five days. Uh, during that forty-five day period, we'll also meet with the Planning Commission, Hood River County. Do a citywide notice, uh, to all property owners as well as utility customers. Then, uh, this one, uh, will need to come back to, uh, come back to the city council. In the form of an ordinance, uh, for public hearing, uh, and two readings during those, um. Uh, meetings, you also, uh, receive any input, any written input from overlapping districts. Decide whether to accept, reject, or modify, uh, any of their suggestions, uh, to the council. Uh, if, uh, adopted before the end of the fiscal year, uh, tax collection will, uh, continue. Uh, into fiscal year twenty twenty-five in the waterfront district. Uh, if not, uh, if, uh, this maximum indebtedness increase is not approved, uh, we will, uh. This will, uh, this current fiscal year will be the last year that any tax, any tax increment is generated from the waterfront district and all. Um, taxing that will be released to the general rules in FY twenty-five. Um, so with that, I'll answer any questions you have and, uh, we have the res- resolution and, uh, suggested motion in your packet.
So let's, let's, um. Megan and I talked for two seconds today, so I'm, I'm gonna jump out of my normal order and let you start if you'd like, or, or else we do.
Um, I mean, I, it's not a question for Will, so if folks have questions, I'd love to do that and then I'm gonna go into more of the policy.
All right, let, let's, let's go through the list real quick and just see if we have questions, well, uh, Tim?
None for me, Mark.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could provide a little bit more clarity, uh, just for those listening about, um. The, uh, the, the funding, um. Regarding the school districts, you know, I, I, we, I, I feel like you've explained it well to me, I just wanted, uh, for the record, just, uh. The, so that people understand that, you know, what a million dollars looks like, et cetera, et cetera, right, so.
Yeah, absolutely, um, so during, uh, with the implementation of. Measures five and fifty in the nineteen nineties, school funding was substantially divorced from actual property tax collections. Um, because of, uh, the frozen, the, the, um. Fact that assessed values were, were frozen and, uh, only allowed to increase by three percent per year. Could, uh, create substantial inequities in, uh, school district funding between districts. So, um, the state, uh, common school fund equalizes for differences in property tax, uh. Collections between districts and the same goes for educational service districts and the community college, uh, support fund that, um. Funds to community colleges, so all those will, uh, if local property taxes decrease or increase. There will be a offsetting increase or decrease, uh, in state funding.
Thanks a lot for that context.
Just as a, a follow-up of that explanation, th- this, this means that we give the opportunity for the rest of Oregon to help pay for our sewer, which as a mayor is a great thing.
That's correct.
Um, could, could you remind us how much we, urban renewal dollars we spent on the storm? Water debacle to date and, and with the, um, estimates, some of how much is left? I think, I think it's close to that, you know, it has left.
Yeah, it, in two thousand twenty, the agency dedicated all remaining maximum indebtedness to, um. To this project and I don't have the number off the top of my head as a little over two million dollars.
Right, so about, with wish and with two-ish to go?
Yeah, if, if needed, uh, I should note that if project costs, when this goes to bidding, project costs don't. Require the addition of this maximum, uh, uh, maximum indebtedness, uh, then it can be later relinquished back to overlapping districts. Um, or used for other, uh, waterfront urban renewal projects, but the existing policy, uh. Set by resolution is to give the, uh, this stormwater line project first fun, uh, first priority.
Um, cool, any other, did that think? Come up with any other questions, Tim, we're good? Right, um, on, uh, so now I guess it's, we have the motion in front of us, so, uh, any discussion related to that?
Thank you, Mark, uh, and apologies, I was not at the last meeting, but, um. This is gonna be a little rambly, uh, I think. Last summer, we were going around to the overlapping agencies to form the West Side Urban Renewal District. Area, whatever it's called, I should know that, um. And I had, I had the privilege to go to at least three of them with staff, um. Which I think was a really valuable relationship building, but I also think was, was an incredibly. Important reminder that I needed of the, the numbers of what other districts give up in this, even though they're very small and, you know, what we're used to in a city budget. Have substantial impacts on those districts, um. And I'm especially a little uncomfortable, although I'm aware we didn't know at the time that as we were going around and talking about the West Side District, we were talking about how. The waterfront was gonna, you know, close out and they were gonna get that money back at the time that they were starting to lose. Money from West Side, um. And so all within all this, I, I understand, you know, where the board last meeting said, okay, we don't wanna, you know. Have to take a bunch of money we don't necessarily have out of the stormwater fund, but I am. Really uncomfortable with the idea that we're gonna set aside two, two plus million for what, you know, at least in the projection is a hundred thousand in gap. And I don't love the idea that we are doing a blank check of taking other folks' valuable money. That yes, we can spend on probably valuable projects, but, you know, feels a bit more like the slush fund of, oh, it'd be fun to do this versus. Some more necessary services and so I. From where I'm at, if we're gonna do this, I'd love, uh, and I know you didn't wanna do this, Will, last time, I heard it in the, in the meeting I watched, but, um. If we're gonna do this, I'd love it to be some sort of guarantee that we would just be covering. The stormwater gap and then giving the rest back versus kind of just creating an open-ended pool, um. Those are my rambly thoughts and thank you.
So I, I have a counter thought, but, but let's, let's go around the table.
As a policy, I agree with Counselor Saunders, um, these other districts don't necessarily have much say in this. Decision, it's up to us sitting here on this body, um, and their budgets are. Not as grandiose as ours, so even though in absolute terms, the dollar amount that we take from these other agencies to. Fix this problem, um, is small in terms of the overall pie, it's. It, it, it hurts quite a bit, um, library district, parks district, all, all, all the other ones. Don't have the fiscal mechanisms or resources that we do to accommodate some of these things. So, I understand very, very well the, the, using this fiscal mechanism to, um. Close any gaps we may have. I would also be a proponent of as soon as we are done and any remaining funds that we have on this are returned back on the rolls. As quickly as we possibly can as a matter of policy.
Uh, I, I think we talked about this last time as well, I'm not opposed to that, I, I just don't know if it's, if we're able to make that in, as part of the policy, if there's a way to. To actually do that, make, put that contingency on there.
Then be- before I chat, Tim, did you want to add to that?
I agree with that, if it's possible to guarantee that the money will go back to the taxing districts. We don't use it for the stormwater fund, is a good idea.
So, so my, I, my look at this is, you know, they set up the Urban Renewal District for the waterfront. And it was doing pretty good stuff, it was, you know, did the infrastructure, it did the, uh, on Portway, it did the, uh, smell reduction stuff. Which is critical to it being a vibrant little part of town, um, we then took two million dollars off the top. To, to, cause that was the right thing to do, to fix, to fix the pipe, um, if. We, eh, I, I think that the, the added indebtedness is important to make sure that we don't all of a sudden. Eh, eh, endanger our sewer fund and, and stuff, if, if there is money left over. I think it's wise to have the, uh, agency discussion at that time about whether we want, want to. If there's other important pieces, it's not, not just, oh, let's, it's not fun money, it's money that we expected to sp- spend on infrastructure. Um, all that time that, that's gonna do real, real things, but. Do we, do we don't decide now that we will not do any other infrastructure that we? That we wait and see if we have money left, we might not even have money left, and if we do, that. Hmm, us, us as that future council or agency will, will get to decide, so, uh, I'm, I'm. Suggesting it's not in our best interest to, to decide today what, what that future. Agency meeting will decide and I don't think we have to, um. Tax increment is, it's, it's a neat, it's one of the few tools we have to, to do infrastructure-y stuff, I mean, that's why we just set up West Side. Um, so. Uh, I guess, um, I would suggest we do a clean passage of this, uh, and then. But there's, there's motions and seconds and all that kind of stuff, Paul.
I, I agree with, uh, the concept that, of course, the money is essential to our neighboring districts and we, we don't wanna. Cut off services, um, and what we read in the papers so often is that. Failing infrastructure of our country, I think having, uh, having the opportunity to not fall behind or in behind her on our local infrastructure is a great opportunity. So I would choose to agree with Mark, that let, let's not, uh, rule out. That at this time, we can have that discussion when the, when everything comes in under budget.
Tim?
I would agree with both you and Mark, the exception that we've already gone to the taxing districts and told them. That the money is gonna go back to them. So that, that's a different thing to me, right? It's not like it's, uh. When we specifically told them that, so it's different. So I don't agree with that.
I'm gonna second Tim just said, um. You know, that this is, some of this is community relations of, we, we went and I'm aware there's an unforeseen circumstance, we didn't know last summer, but. It doesn't feel great and I can see how it's gonna look quite underhanded from an outside agency for us to do this. And I think there's a much easier conversation and a much easier way for them to plan for their budgets for the next few years. If we say, okay, it's for this smaller pocket of filling a gap versus two point. Nine or what, two point one, sorry, I shouldn't have that memorized, um. There's a different conversation depending on the two answers.
I, I guess, if there's a motion, but, but, let's go there, um. That makes sense, I mean, so, it, I think the, you're proposing a, a encumbering motion and, and, and that makes sense and, and then. Um, I'm suggesting not, but, but I, I think, let's, let's, let's see where it go.
You turn on your.
Please.
Um, so, staff is agnostic on this policy consideration, but, um, our original recommendation was to adopt this. Uh, in the quickest path possible because we are under just an unmoving deadline of this fiscal year and it must, there's a, still a number of steps that all need. To be sequenced and, and get done and we, uh, foresaw that there would, would not be unanimity, uh, on this po- policy question. Which is why we, um, had recommended, uh, passing the, the, um, resolution now to, to get this process moving. Uh, the Urban Renewal Agency Board, uh, could direct us, uh, to come back with a resolution in your very next meeting, setting a priority or setting a policy. Um, similar to twenty twenty where we said that the waterfront, um, stormwater line gets all priority for every dollar that's available. Um, we could have a standalone resolution to settle this policy question. Uh, but we do, we did, uh, know, just understanding the, the board and also. The, uh, Port Commissioners who are not, uh, with us today, that there was a difference of opinion on this policy question. Which is why we wanted to extricate it from the very. Quick and a expeditious and efficient process we need in order to get this done if we want to increase maximum indebtedness.
So, so I guess the agency members is passing a clean resolution with a policy intention. Is that sufficient or, um? Or do we wanna stop?
I think in the interest of actually getting this thing done in the timeline, we need to get it done, we should pass this cleanly, however. Um, as regarding policy, I would still. Want or ob- object to just this clean language for the same reasons that, uh, expressed prior. Um, as a, as a, an instrument to get, get the pipe done to completion. Which was originally talked about, this should pass, um, that, that part of it should get done. The other policy part of it. We certainly can continue to talk about.
I mean, we could even, we could pass it clean and then have a motion to, you know. Mark that we had this, you know, that this is our policy intention. Mark that we had this, you know, that this is our policy intention.
That's, that's what I mean. And, and the other, the other thing, another thing about my thinking behind it is projects come up occasionally, stuff happens during projects that are unforeseen. Already budgeted for the rest of the stuff. So you can't just, my opinion is you can't just go back and then bump up your budget when you went to all the other districts in this case and said, oh, we, we, uh, we already committed to this amount and now we want to change your budget. Sorry, guys. And if, if we force a lot now, it also doesn't provide any clarity for all these other districts to forecast their budgets and plan their cycles either. So if, if we don't provide them that clarity or kick off this policy to some undetermined point in the future as to whether we're going to put any balance back on the rolls or not, or when that happens. That does not do a disservice to the, or it does a disservice to the other districts. It does not provide them the clarity that they need to as effectively, effectively as they can operate.
So, so I think, um, given that we would have to come back anyway, let's, I suggest that there'd be a clean motion. And then if, if, if it goes forward, it goes forward. And if it doesn't go forward, then we know the answer, right? Yes, Paul.
I move the Urban Renewal Agency Board adopt Resolution 2024 URA dash O three, initiating the process to increase the waterfront district's maximum indebtedness by substantial plan amendment.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion from Paul and a second from Grant. Um, any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
This is more just a clarification of the vote I'm about to make, but I fully understand the importance of funding the stormwater project. I understand the reason and the need for the clean resolution right now, but without the extra policy discussion that we are going to have, I am going to vote no tonight. But thank you, Will. I'm sorry.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but should, should we pass this cleanly? When the day comes that this project has been completed, if any funds are to be appropriated for anything else, it'd be coming before this board, before those were appropriated?
That'd be correct. Uh, if appropriated through the budget, through the budget committee and then to the board.
Thank you.
Oh, do we have an estimate of like when we might know that it's going to not go gassy over?
Adam, can I? Uh, so Faye will know the, the final costs on relocation of the outfall in the next few weeks. Uh, we're a year out, I think from the, the next phases. Is that correct? From bidding out of construction?
Uh, phase three will hopefully go to bed within the next month.
Oh, sorry. Phase three, which is the downtown portion in, in next month, which doesn't impact the phase three has been paid for by the downtown district. So not pertinent to this, but the final phase, I think is a year away.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Public Works Director. Uh, phase four, uh, due to funding, we just had a meeting this morning, uh, needs to be, um, pushed before December. So, um, it'll probably be sooner than later on phase four, but we have a lot to do from now until then.
Implementation or planning?
Planning. Yeah, design.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, not work.
Thank you.
All right, we, we, we have a motion and a second. Any other last bits? All in favor, say yes.
All right, I, I.
Uh, against?
No.
No.
Okay, and Chair votes yes. So, um, motion carries. Now, do, do we want, I, I think that there is an opportunity for a motion right now to set the intent of the policy change, but Paul, go ahead.
I can ask a point of order. Sorry. This is a nine-member board. We have four yes votes.
Yeah. It'd be, uh, so you have a quorum, so you can conduct business and you have a majority of those present.
Great, thank you.
So is there interest in, in doing a policy motion now?
Yes.
So I, I'm, I'm not sure how to word this, but I, I would, you know, set a motion that the intention of the policy is that once the stormwater project has been fully funded, um, that we intend to return all, all surplus revenues, um, back to the taxi districts.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion.
I have a second for Megan. Uh, any discretion on that? All in favor, say, oh, Paul, go ahead.
I think Doug, you were very wise in your wording. You, you, you left it, you, 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 you addressed the, the actual absolute intent of it. You didn't say when we would need to know and, but in, in fact, when, when we know that it's not going horribly over, then we can, yeah, you, that, that was, I thought, really clear. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
All right.
On chair votes, no. But just, I think we should do it later, but, but, um, it, it, it matters, matters very little, the motion passes. Okay, Administrator update.
Uh, just a couple of small items. Jurisdictional transfer negotiations with ODOT are continuing. Just last week, we got an update from them that they were still working on doing the research that they needed to come back. And specifically, they're looking at ADA, estimated cost for ADA improvements and, and timelines, which is, I think the information that's we're looking for right now. Uh, earnest money was paid on 1217 May Street and we're in diligence period. Uh, so we're having inspections done and, um, all sorts of tests and know exactly what we're, um, what we're buying. And the five-year action plan slowed a bit with the maximum indebtedness work, uh, but still progressing. LAMBA team got some initial research to me just last Friday and meeting with Echo Northwest for, um, another, uh, another working meeting on the 22nd. So I'll have more updates for you on that later.
None.
No.
Nothing.
Nope. Tim?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That takes us back to our
uh, council meeting. We have, I think, help me.
Abigail.
Only, only Megan signed up on a visit from there. Megan, would you like to speak at the time of the topic when Jackie is presenting on the screen, Brad? Or do you want to speak right now? Great. So in that case, the next thing is June. June, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Great. We have the trauma intervention program Northwest, June Vining. Thanks for being with us, June.
Thank you. I am going to share my screen. Okay. Hey, so I'm talking about, um, the trauma intervention program. Um, I think some of you might know what this is. I'm not here to ask for anything. I just wanted to tell you about what we are and what we're doing. Since we've been up and alive and responding for about two years now. We are a nonprofit of specially trained volunteers that show up at the request of police, fire, law enforcement, medical examiner on scene to provide emotional and practical support to people, um, following a crisis event. Most of that time means that somebody has died. We have to be activated. Um, we have to be requested on scene. We don't just show up. And, um, just like with all the big calls that you hear in the news, we respond to what we call the daily disasters. When somebody wakes up and their spouse of 50 or 60 years didn't, and they call 911 and police and fire show up, who sits with them until their support system gets there? So we have these specially trained volunteers who are background checked and fingerprinted and go through 60 hours of training on what to say, or more importantly, what not to say when they're dealing with people in crisis. Um, and go out on just about any kind of call, um, you can imagine. Our mission is pretty simple. Our citizen volunteers provide emotional first aid to survivors of tragedy in order to ease their immediate suffering and facilitate their healing and long-term recovery. We believe that a lot of research, if people aren't left alone immediately after something bad has happened, they were given a death notification, they witnessed something, they're part of something, there wouldn't be as much of a need for this long-term care later if we can come right alongside somebody. We hand out, um, a resource guide that has, uh, resources in your area. Um, and this is updated every year. Right now, we are currently working on translating this into Spanish, but this has a list of articles on how to deal and, um, the resources, um, who cleans up after a homicide or suicide. And just step by step, what, what information is needed when we go to the funeral home for a death certificate and so on. So I want to show you the last, um, this is our, our report from, um, 2023. And you can see that, um, we went on 48 requests. And who the dispatching agencies down below, the city served and people who call in. So it might be interesting to know too, that we started, um, this group of volunteers, um, just over 20 with a grant from Google and a matching from a volunteer, um, who lives there. So, um, this is, this is a real healthy chapter. This is a, a good call volume for the area that we're serving. Uh, the next training academy we have is starting in April and all of this is available online, but this is an example of, um, our flyer. Last week, we had our graduation for our last November academy. These people just finished their three-month field training program. So we had, um, in that academy, one Hood River resident and two teens from Hood River graduate. So now we're back up to over 20 volunteers and three teens in Hood River that are part of this team. And I wanted to just give you contact information. Um, again, we're going on just about any kind of call you can imagine, SIDS, suicide, homicide, drug overdose, auto wreck, house fire, drowning. Now, our biggest call is a natural death. So that's a really quick, um, synopsis of what we do, but I wanted to be able to share it with you. Um, and I am available for questions.
June, I'm so glad you're here in our community, doing this work and here with us tonight. Thank you for your good leadership and your very crisp presentation. Questions tonight for our partner in healing and health? Mark.
A question for Abigail. Is, is Tip Northwest one of the links on our community networky?
Thank you for the question. I'm not sure, but we can look into that and, and add it if appropriate.
And I, I assume, June, that that's a good thing, right?
Yeah, that's a great thing. You know, we had, we just partnered with, um, the county, you know, we had, um, another suicide at the high school. And so we came up with Lines for Life and supported, um, the staff and people there. So, um, and industrial, I mean, the calls just, you know, as you can imagine, there are a variety, but any resource they have, because we're 24/7. So if somebody was in crisis and didn't know what to do for help, that number, the 940 that's on our website on the front of this book here too, the 9407997, that's answered 24/7.
Great. Thank you, June. Other questions? Comments? Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, thank you so much for the work that you're doing and for helping out in the community. Um, just a couple of quick questions. Um, first one, uh, you mentioned Spanish translation. That's for the guide. Um, are there Spanish resources that, uh, that can be dispatched or, or if, uh, are answering the phones?
Yeah, we have, um, we have ability for Spanish speakers. We have some, we have, um, seven different languages we cover that our Hood River group has access to. We have just one, um, I think Spanish speaker in Hood River, but we have access to the ones by phone. So we're actively recruiting and trying to hope, um, like I said, actively getting this translated, all these articles, because this is about a 20-page document. I'm just showing you the front cover.
Thank you. Uh, and second question, just in the spirit of what Mark had mentioned, uh, I think usually one of us asks, and I, I understand you're not, you're not coming here asking for anything, but is uh, what, what would be, uh, the way for the city to help to get the word out in your opinion? Or, or what have you seen in other communities that helps get the word out for, uh, increasing awareness and increasing volunteerism?
Say, we're, we're active in a lot of your community events where we have our Hood River citizens sitting at, um, those, um, concerts and safety fairs and open houses, spreading the word. I see we have our police chief and fire chief on here. They're awesome to help spread the word because people want to know how they can help. Um, those are all great things. Um, we did the training when we started two years ago physically in Hood River. Now we just come up to do our monthly meetings and people are coming to Portland. If we have another solid group of people, we'll be ready to come up and do the training physically in Hood River again. So spreading the word on your page or links when people want to volunteer and know how they can get involved in the community would be awesome help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, June. We're gonna move on. You can move on as well. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Uh, Jackie. Great. Megan. Make it turn green. Good to go. Touch the rim.
Yes, thank you. So my name is Megan Ramey. I live at 1886 Belmont. And, uh, I timed myself before this and I went slightly over like 15 seconds. Um, three minutes is very hard to express all the love and, uh, thank yous I have for, um, for our community. So I'm going to try and be brief. So I testify as a Safe Roots School manager for the school district. Um, this August will be my two year, two-year anniversary and probably, uh, the most rewarding position of my life. And I want to thank the city for being a partner in this work. Um, I just couldn't help but notice, uh, it is truly, it takes a village, like Hussein, who testified about the peacekeeping, uh, was my first bike train volunteer. His niece, who was sitting in the back row, was one of my first bike train riders. Um, we have Nicole here in the second row, who's one of our main Anson's bike buddy, uh, renters. And, um, and then I'm going to give shout outs or flowers to you guys too. So, um, along with the other Safe Roots Coalition members, we have raised 11 million in three years for infrastructure and programming for childhood mobility. Specifically, I, I want to thank Jonathan Sklovan Gill for stepping up when no one else would and shepherding Safe Roots School and the middle school demonstration through many hurdles we faced. Um, Abigail, Jackie, thank you. Uh, internal negotiation and communications work. And lastly, to Public Works for working through 90-degree heat to install it. Um, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank Councilors Anne Miller for being out there I don't know how many days, um, to do traffic counts and observe behavior as well as Gladys, um, for being in the Spanish PSA. She said it was the first ever Spanish-only PSA with subtitles, which I thought was really cool. Okay, so I'm not sure Jackie will play some of the student interviews, but I highly recommend watching them. Um, this demonstration made a huge difference in many lives. Uh, two themes came up over and over again, feeling safe from the cars and feeling like they had their own space. So I have three asks tonight, um, is one that our city works towards, uh, bikeways with, and you'll understand what I'm talking about when Jackie uh, gives her presentation, that we work toward bikeways with delineation or physical separation. Like the bumps and posts or even parked cars. This is what makes parents honestly feel safer to let their kids ride or walk to school. I know there are seasonal maintenance considerations for Public Works, but given the future 12th Street cycle track, we have to figure it out. Anyway, um, number two is to support the two ODOT grant applications in your packet. One is to make the demonstration permanent with intersection treatment. And the second is to support the school district in funding my position for another two years. So we have, if, uh, we get this grant and, um, and it goes another two years, then the community's ask is going to be, do we want this person or this position around? And how is the coalition going to come together and fund it? Uh, long-term without grant funding. Um, and three, and then I'll pass out just these materials quickly. So you guys have, have, uh, stuff to take home. Um, I didn't want to pass this out early, so you were preoccupied with the pictures. Um, the third is to support, uh, the school district, uh, would be applying for this ODOT grants, uh, engineering assist- Engineering Assistance Grant for Pacific Avenue Bike Way Design, which I've included in these materials. The bike bus from Pacific to May Street Elementary, also known as formerly the Bike Train, is why I stand in front of you today. Those kids have to ride in the middle of the street or the sidewalk, forcing conflict between walking and biking. Two times ambulances were called because a senior or mobility challenged person fell when they encountered the bike, bike train on the sidewalk. You'll see from the enclosed map that there is a, that's on the first page. There is a high density of students who live in off the Pacific Avenue neighborhood. Red dots are May Street students, orange dots are middle school students, and that tealish dot are the high school students. The grant would fund a design only, but it would be, but it would enable us to apply for construction funding in twenty twenty-six. A Pacific Avenue Bike Way would connect the students to the high school via the future Indian Creek Trail that we got seven million for, where the Parks District did, and then the 12th Street Cycle Track for the future. So this is a thinking about what the future connections to both those major arteries would be. The grant requires no financial or staff commitment from the city, but it would be nice to keep you all informed in the process as a stakeholder and as would definitely welcome participation. So the last, I, I included the cross-section of Pacific Avenue and how much space there actually is. So we wouldn't have to forego anything. This is just a mock design, like showing you how much space there is. And then also, I still have this, Dustin's collect. From Planning Commission, when I was on it in twenty eighteen, this was the one community health rendering that showed a bike lane on Pacific Avenue. And we, as planning commissioners at the time unanimously thought we were making a condition of approval as for a bike lane on Pacific or the one community health building, but it's still not there. So I think this design, this free design would help us reconcile that. But I thank you so much. I can't wait for Jackie's presentation. Honestly, this project has been so wonderful for the community and I thank you so much for, for doing it.
Thanks, Megan, for your good work.
Give me one second while I pull up the presentation. Oh, there we go. Okay. All right. Thanks, Megan, for introducing this. Yeah, so today we are going to give you guys a debrief on the demonstration project that was part of the Safe Roots to School project that occurred at the Hood River Middle School. And again, want to thank Megan Ramey, as well as Jonathan Sklovan Gill for their contributions to this presentation and the entire project as well. As well as Public Works and our community partners who helped to make this possible, which include the Hood River Walk and Roll, Anson's Bike Buddies, the Hood River County School District, and ODOT. And so just to give you a quick reminder as to what the project was, it was a rearrangement of the streets surrounding the Hood River Middle School to encourage more students to walk or roll to school and as well as increase their safety while they were doing so. And so you can see on this image here, there was the additional stop sign that was placed on May Street at seventeen. And then the bike, the multi-use path along Seventeenth and Eighteenth Streets. So this project came about because in the Safe Roots to School Plan, this area was identified as a high priority construction project. And after attempts to secure funding for actual construction to implement a protective bike lane, which were unsuccessful, the sentiment was to try something out temporarily, see how it works, see what, see what we can learn from this demonstration project. And so I just want to reiterate some of the goals that were laid out in the plan, which include increasing safety, increasing equity, access to health through physical activity, mental health as well. And increase the environmental health surrounding the schools by encouraging alternative modes of transportation. So going and looking at this demonstration project, we had some ways of evaluating the project to see what was successful and what could, what could we learn? The city hosted three online community surveys. These were promoted via our own cities avenues, such as the newsletter, website, social media, as well as through the school district. And they were also QR-coded onto the signposts at the project itself. The Safe Roots to School Coordinator also conducted weekly, I believe there were weekly interviews with students. Then we had Jonathan, Megan, and Mark, Councilor Zan Miller, who went out and did use counts to see how many students were using the, the new infrastructure and when. And then as the city leadership, we came together and evaluated this as well, as well as taking into account some complaints that were received by the police and Public Works. And then we reported this back to the Safe Roots to School Coalition and got their feedback as well on the demonstration. And then we laid all of these recommendations that we were, that were coming out of this, from all of these evaluation metrics. And, and we had to say like, what can we actually do right now with what we have learned? What can we physically feasibly implement? So just to go through some of the surveys really fast. So we had three. We had one just to get an understanding of what folks already knew about the project. So that was the pre, pre-survey. Then we had one during and one post. And just so you know, the responses that we got, the majority of folks lived within the city and vast majority, I think it was less than one percent, lived outside of the county. So yeah, about almost three quarters lived within the city and about a quarter lived in the county. And of that, of those, we had about two-thirds that were part of the school community, either they were parents, students, or worked at the middle school. And then about a third who were part of the community, but not actually a part of the school district in some way. And as you can see from this, I'm gonna move, are you able to move my thing? So across the board, the, the question here on the bottom, if you can't see, so on the furthest left, it says, as a cyclist, this demonstration made it safer. The middle one says, as a walker, this demonstration made it safer. And then the one on the right says, as a motorist, this demonstration made it safer. And you can see that across the board, the lightest, it goes, basically the lightest is strongly agree, and then the darkest is strongly disagree with the statement. And across the board, there was overwhelming sentiment that this demonstration did in fact make it safer for all users from all users. We had a lot of writing responses to better understand, you know, what, you know, what were the, the positive aspects, what, you know, what were some of the negative aspects? So we heard things like, as a driver, it made me feel safer knowing where, knowing there was at least a visual and somewhat physical barrier. We heard a lot about the three-way stop, the additional stop sign that had been confusing before as a two-way stop. And so this added a lot of clarity. And that added, we heard a lot of things of like, it added a lot of comfort for parents, knowing that this was there. And then, so to look at some of the counts to understand, you know, did this encourage more folks to walk or bike to school? Not a drastic change there, but there is a slight increase. So for each of these columns, so there's bikers on the left, walkers in the middle, and then kids in cars on the right. And so for the bikers and walkers, there is a slight uptick there, and then a slight decrease in kids in cars, both at the intersections of May Eighteenth and May and Seventeenth. And then continuing on looking at in the morning and in the afternoon, same thing, we're seeing a few more kids biking and walking to school during the demonstration project and a few less kids in cars. And so some of the successes from this project were the stop sign. We heard that it, it helped slow traffic before entering the area in front of the school. That it added predictability, because now folks in every direction were stopping. And as well as the bike lane narrowed the lanes a little bit and slowed traffic in that way. We saw time and time again that the separate, that separation, knowing where people were gonna be. Knowing that this is where people on bikes go, this is where people walking go, and then this is where the cars go. And having everyone have their own designated space really added to the comfort and sense of security as well as physical safety. And we, we did hear as well, a lot that, that having it be an actual physical protected barrier was as well an added security measure. And we did see some sort of mixed feelings on this as well. But overall, the separation was very, very critical in that. And then in terms of the education, we heard a lot of really positive feedback on, you know, it was really clearly marked, I knew where to go. And kids, kids also knew where to go. They had been taught what, like, what to do in this area. And with that, we did see a little bit of room for improvement in terms of our communications and education, that we heard both positive and negative feedback on these aspects. Some, some negative feedback on just like how the, people who didn't like the aesthetics of it, who maybe didn't really understand that this was only meant to be temporary and the equipment that we were using was temporary. But overall, we, we did hear a lot of positive feedback on the markings and kids understanding how to use the pathway. Some of the challenges. One aspect was a lot of kids cut through the Meyer Parkway to get and park their bike where they're locked at the pool. And this is dangerous because that is where the ambulance is and the fire truck come in and out of. And so we were kind of hoping that this new path would reroute students to stay on that path, and we did not seek success for that measure. There was some confusion of, from the community, or especially from the non-school community as to what was going on, and especially that this was a temporary demonstration project. And as well as we took note that there was a few missed opportunities with back-to-school communications that we could have taken, that, that we could have gotten the word out a little bit more about what the, what the purpose of this was. And then infrastructure-wise, the, the connection onto and off of the pathway were areas that we need a little bit more refinement. So at, up at Belmont, that's a kind of tricky intersection, because across the street, there is a driveway there for a business. So that adds some challenges to getting folks across the street and into the neighborhoods that are up there, since it's easily not aligned street. And then at the south end, no, I'm sorry, at the north end of the project, on Seventeenth, there was a construction going on that prevented the continuation of the full path. And then yeah, and so there, without having that connection, it made it kind of awkward for kids to cut halfway through across and come up. And by the time the construction was done, there was only a couple of weeks left before the demonstration was being, gonna be taken down. Some of the other challenges were along Seventeenth. This is where we saw most of the complaints about the project overall. That now folks, now there were some folks dropping off who were just stopping in the middle of traffic and dropping their kid off right there. Blocking traffic. And so this area, yeah. We did see a lot of sort of negative feedback as well as the impact on parking, especially during special events, because there were some parking spots there that were no longer available. And so now we were seeing more parking in the neighborhoods during the, the week and then as well for special events. And the last thing, which is just to note, you know, should we implement these bike paths are just some of the ways that we were marking things could have been even a little bit more apparent in terms of the pedestrian markings, guidance onto and off, like between where we have sidewalk and where we don't have sidewalk. And then in the future, should we do another project like this, having sort of a almost like a kiosk to let people know, you know, that they're entering this project and a little bit about it, so people can understand what we're doing. Some other lessons learned from this were that behavior change takes time. You know, we did see that slight increase in kids biking and walking to school. But you know, in only three months, we can't expect to see a huge behavior change. Continuing to work really closely with the schools to make sure that those communications get out and just improving the visuals as well. One of the other big lessons was that the bike parking, the location matters. And so continuing to work with the school itself to get additional bike parking where to support that aspect in, in terms of kids not coming through Meyer Parkway. And so here are the next steps that the city is planning on moving forward with. And we're here for your feedback on this as well. But already we have implemented the stop sign that is, that is there now permanently. And then putting in place along the Eighteenth Street from Belmont to May, the shared multi-use path and having it be, but not incorporating the physical barriers as that creates problems for snowplow as well as for street sweeping, as well as is more of an infrastructure change that would be significantly more expensive. But implementing a thermoplastic and painted bike path, multi-use path along the Eighteenth Street from Belmont to May. And then further refinement of getting on to and off of the pathway at May and at Belmont. That those two areas need a little bit more problem solving. And we'll get into a little bit more of the funding and how, you know, how we would like to phase that funding for that. But Public Works is ready to implement the multi-use path along Eighteenth this spring, I believe. And yes, and then there's potential with funding from Safe Roots to School grants as well for the engineering, those exits and exits, and also for reconsidering how can we make Seventeenth more bike and pedestrian friendly as well, since the way that it was that, or the demonstration project did not prove it to be successful, how we had done it. And then long-term as well, looking at how can we implement more of like a physical infrastructure there? Should funding become available? And should as well as the equipment for maintaining it, you know, as we look at, at the cycle track on, in the heights, that's when we may want to revisit, do we want to incorporate some of those elements here as well? And so now, do you guys have any questions for me?
Regarding Public Works. Oh, I'm sorry. Regarding Public Works, it's fine, I'm gonna go ahead. Regarding plows, back in trucks, et cetera, would the, would a minimal physical barrier of the ballers work fine for Public Works' access? Or are you even having ballers, the, the white ballers, too much?
Currently, the sweeper is too wide to sweep in the bike lane. So yeah, we would not be able to do any maintenance in the summertime. And then, of course, in the wintertime, it creates its own issues as well.
Yeah, if, if the, hypothetically, if the ballers were able to be removed come wintertime to do snow maintenance with ladder, anything like that.
Yeah, it would be. Yeah, it could be an option. Yeah, still. I think, yeah, creates its own issues with, yeah, sweeping as well. I think it, yeah, creates its own issues with, yeah, sweeping uh as well, and then, yeah, snow removal. Sidewalk.
So. I I guess uh uh more comments to to what you said than uh um questions, uh. You know, just uh being that I've spent a great amount of time in the Netherlands where a lot of these things were uh incorporated, I I I I will speak very highly of what you said about everybody understanding their own space. Um, physical barriers, I think, are a great thing if we can figure out how to do that, um, because we are facing a challenge where people don't usually uh have cycle infrastructure at all, so they're not educated on. Um, I'll also say that um regarding the ad behavioral changes, it's encouraging that we saw some changes, but um in the Netherlands in the nineteen seventies, everybody thinks that that place is like, oh, it's it's cycling forever, but it was highly car-dependent. Uh, up until the nineteen seventies, um, there was an area that I lived in that had a one hundred kilometer per hour four-lane highway. It's now a canal because people are cycling so much, so I think anything that we can do to show that we are able to make changes, it just takes planting that seed and and growing from there. And I'm not saying we'll be the Netherlands, uh we're far more car-dependent here, but we we definitely can can see some behavioral changes by making, you know, bigger, bigger uh thinking sort of uh implementations of this this kind of thing than than just uh, you know, putting a putting a a share-o down. So applaud everything that's been going on, and thank you so much for the presentation and all the information that you collected. Uh, it's tremendously useful for us for making policy decisions going forward on this kind of thing. Thank you.
Um, thank you and Public Works and Megan and everyone, um it's nice to see that a good chunk of it was really positive, as as someone who lives in that neighborhood, the the three-way stop now is even just as a driver, really nice. Um, I do, I know, I know there's the particular challenges and of course always the money aspect, um but the it it seems that, you know, that a lot of the feedback was about having some of that physical separation being really valuable. Um, so I don't, I don't know, maybe this is more a plea for Abigail of if there's ways we can explore that, maybe before we get into the height stuff, which I think is probably still a few years out. Um, I don't know what that looks like, it's may may or may not be an easy answer, but it does seem like figuring out whether it's for Eighteenth or around the city, some solutions that can work with our infrastructure and our weather and our Public Works equipment is gonna be important long-term. So, thank you.
Uh, Mark and then Grant.
Yeah, good, good work. It it takes a safe route to school binder on a shelf and it and it actually did something. So, so this is exactly what we want to do. Um, I I agree with Megan and Doug that that, you know, this is the first step and and figuring out the budgetary stuff of having to be able to do protected things in the meantime, using the reflective bumpers and 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 stuff that I I think it's, it seems like a prudent first step, uh encourage you to all have been working on it to to keep the faith and keep, keep doing, keep doing these little steps, because because it's good stuff, and um if you need to counter this fall, I'll I'll be ready, so.
Um, I just wanted to point it out that we have a number of counts here and how things changed during this project. This project was very limited to two streets and only kind of part of those two streets. And yet we saw the these number of changes when these two blocks, I'll just call them blocks, uh aren't connected to anything else, no other infrastructure of this nature uh in our city is connected to that location. And we saw this change, so if if we were to go through and, let's say, build complete streets, what changes would we then see? And how, how inexpensive is this compared to everything else that we do and everything else we invest in?
That that's a a useful comment, can you? I wish I, everyone had heard that, can you just say what, Megan said?
Megan said twelve thousand dollars.
Is what it costs to.
For the demonstration project?
Yeah, true.
Great, thanks.
Put put painted temporary barriers down to show this kind of difference. That's how, that's how little this takes um to create permanent change in this way, even using the streets that we have. There are a number of grants available through Oregon ODOT, uh Megan and I serve on the Region One Act. So there, there are funds available for these purposes. Um, some of the limitations we'll have to address is uh messing with the TSP a little bit. Uh, I'm not trying to open up too much tonight, but those are the kinds of things that we may have to address in order to take these results and spread them more throughout the city. So, um, I am impressed with these results. I'm not necessarily surprised, but I am excited about these results and am here for it.
Tim, I'm aware of you, let me know if you wanna. Should I have a head?
Thanks, Paul. Um. I guess a pondering I had was, to what extent, if the pool development goes through, will it affect the dynamic at that intersection? Have you considered that, Jackie?
Yes, i- it's been discussed, um, but I don't know, we haven't uh fully explored that or understand what that will look like.
Yeah, yeah, but imagine that it might happen.
Um. One of the aspects that we'll discuss later when we talk about the grants um are um looking at sort of interim ways, uh even considering without the um the pools, what's going on with the pool, but also that um that connects onto some of the uh cycle track that will be on May Street from the Height Street skips as well. So figuring out how do we do it interim in a way um that le- leads us for success when that becomes complete.
One thought I had about the Meyer Parkway question is, I could imagine going kind of one of two directions, one would be some or more signs that says, hey, biker, don't cut through ambulances, or it costs more to put in a flasher that said, when flashing, the ambulance is coming, so really stay the heck out, because I mean, let's face it, the ambulance is always buzzing in and out, so much of the time, cutting through wouldn't be a problem, so just that crossed my mind.
Great. Remembering my youth. Yeah, I know, sorry.
So far back.
I know, forever ago. Um. Yeah, 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 yeah. I I grew up in Portland, uh did used to ride my bike to school, um. Did I know school? A- anyway, uh through traffic, over stuff, around stuff. Uh, there were sections where I would ride my bike on the sidewalk because it was there and it was the only way through an area. Um, just hop downstairs because that was the most direct route. Um, and that relates, my my experience, uh relates to Meyer Parkway. When kids aren't going to pay attention to flashers or anything like that, you need to physically create a barrier so kids can't ride their bikes through an area to get kids to stop riding their bikes through an area. If a kid can physically ride their bike through an area, they're gonna ride their bike through the area. So if we're going to evaluate Meyer Parkway and try to move that or adjust that at some point in the future, um. My opinion is that would be the best way to prevent kids from doing that, as well as potentially moving where the bike rack is, so that route is not the shortest distance in between those two points. Because if if the bike racks are moved, say, across the street from the 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 intersection, they might be more inclined to go down and then cross at the intersection instead of go through the shortcut. Wha- what, what, water seeks the most direct course.
Other. All right.
Let's talk about biking in our youth.
Any, uh. Anything else on this piece of it, Jackie?
No, I think we're done with this piece for now, thank you guys for your feedback and questions, and then we'll discuss this a little further on with the action item, looking at the grant.
Thank you, Jackie.
The letters of command.
Thank you, Megan. We're gonna take a br- a brief break and uh continue on. Because it's five minutes of seven.
Do need.
We're gonna reconvene. I was just visiting with Christina in the lobby. She's one of the volunteers with that tip program that we just learned about and I invited her to say a few things. I thought she had some really valuable perspective. So if you wouldn't mind. That's the rim.
Thanks for allowing me to come and give some local perspective to tip Northwest. I have been a volunteer for three years, so both in the Portland area and here locally, I've been on a lot of those calls that June mentioned. I also am a support person, which means I dispatch for tip every sixth weekend for all the Portland Vancouver calls. June didn't give herself enough credit, I didn't feel, because she's actually a national trainer. There's eleven tip chapters across the United States and tip has been in Portland for thirty years. So we're very new to the gorge, but have very well established deep roots as a national organization. I wanted to also respond to one of Doug's questions that I've noticed locally as to who can access us. Because we're so new in the first response system out here, there's been a little bit of when do we call tip? Why should we call tip? Do we call tip? Am I allowed to call tip? I wanted to make some clarity that not only are police sheriff and fire calling us, we are seeing an exponential call in school responses. Hence the tip teens that we have out here. We're also seeing a large response to businesses. So when an employee might die, we see entire communities affected. We in the Portland area, some of those major calls that we're on, we're following up at daycares, we're following up at apartment complexes. All of these different little communities are also affected. So I kind of wanted to invite that if people did need tip to please go ahead and give it a sick call. That's one of the biggest things I think that we're needing to bridge at this point in time is the accessibility so that everybody's invited to access our services free of charge twenty-four seven. I also was first introduced to tip working in the Portland area with the funeral industry. I saw how phenomenal their volunteers were. And then unfortunately, when I was a resident of Wasco County, my son was a victim of a shooting and he was shot in twenty seventeen through his neck with an AR fifteen. And I thought to myself, man, where's my tip person? Because nobody really knew what to say. Even though they were well meaning, caring people of our community, that ended up creating additional injuries that I had to overcome. So tip volunteers are just amazing at knowing what not to say and showing up and being a caring presence, a community member that can support and hold space for people that are going through their worst tragedies of their life. So if you had any questions from a local volunteers perspective, I'm here and available.
Thank you, Christine, so much for your work and for giving us that sort of broader context.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, so now we've got the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I would move we approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Waiting for a second by Tim. Thank you. Moved by Megan, second by Tim. Grant had some discussion or questions or holding for questions.
I think something was attributed to me thanking the school for shoveling the roads. I don't know if I actually gave thanks to them. I think it was somebody else who did it, but I'll take credit.
Yeah, there you go. Give him the give him the credit.
It was Doug.
It was Doug. Give Doug the credit for that. Thanks.
I would like to amend my motion to add that edit.
And did you say the page number, please?
Oh, I gotta find it.
Sam, are you willing to second that amendment?
My second.
Is that how we do that?
Are we still holding for more on this topic?
No, just as amended is fine.
Okay, as amended, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
opposed. Chair votes on motion passes. Action items are first is consolidated schedule. Yay. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So presented in front of you is for discussion and questions is the consolidated fee schedule. This consolidates all city fees and charges which are adopted by the city resolution. The city of River annually adjust user fees, rates and charges each year in preparation for the budget process. This is in some measure the kickoff of the budget process is the discussion and and acceptance of these fees. The consolidated fee schedule also includes building fees, which will be additionally reviewed by the Oregon Building Codes Division after passed by resolution by this council. Proposed changes for the fiscal twenty-four twenty-five fee schedule include the following of note. General inflation adjustments. So the city general fees are pegged to the Western states consumer price index for consumers. The two thousand twenty-three increase was three point six percent. That comes after a six and a quarter percent the previous fiscal year. I'm sorry, the previous calendar year. Increases to the system development charges and many of the building fees are tied to the engineer new record construction cost index. So this is a sort of a construction CPI and that notably increased just two point seven percent. That was after a seven point one nine percent increase in the previous measurement period. So the most significant increase as we relate to the city's budget is the proposed on-street hourly rate increase. The last change in the hourly rate increase or sorry hourly parking rate occurred during the fiscal two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen period. At that time, the parking rates increased from seventy-five cents to a dollar and have remained at a dollar an hour since that time. The two thousand nineteen parking study detailed sustained periods where parking occupancy was constrained. And we discussed last year and I believe you discussed previously the eighty-five percent rule, right? That when parking rates are are it's seeming eighty-five percent occupancy that that is sort of usually the trigger for more aggressive pricing or parking measures, parking. And they have, they seem to have been at that level. They were in the two thousand nineteen study. There was a two thousand twenty-two study. Overall, although the overall parking rate did not quite hit the eighty-five percent on a consistent basis, there were still periods of time when it did reach the eighty-five percent constraint rate and more particularly, it did reach the eighty-five percent constraint rate consistently in the downtown area. I mean, there were certain areas such as Sherman, right? And and outlying streets that are still considered downtown core, but not necessarily the shopping district. That sort of had lower rates, but in downtown in general, we're seeing constraint parking. We had held off on recommending this. It had been discussed over the last couple of years. Now that the CalA machines are installed and there is pay by park, oh, sorry, pay by app. You know, it's a little bit easier for people to pay parking, pay for their parking. So increasing at this time is in recognition of both the investment that was done on the CalA machines as well as the the increased ease by which citizens can pay parking rates. So it is proposed that the hourly rate increase a quarter from a dollar. Other parking increases, again, referencing the eighty-five percent rule, starting in twenty twenty, the city has increased five dollar in five dollar increments. When a permit type has been sold out during the peak season, the cascade front and state lots all remain sold out. So this consolidated fiscal fee schedule has been proposed five dollar increase to sixty dollars per month. Columbia lot is not sold out. Those rates remain at twenty-five dollars per month. We are proposing, the fee schedule proposing some increases in the failure to pay an overtime parking limit and the twenty-five and the twenty-eight day late fee increase. So council action during the fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three year held the failure to pay overtime parking limit to below thirty dollars. The continued use of coin meters created inconvenience for customers, right? There was a, there was, there was some concern that because it was more difficult for people to pay or people to to renew meters, that that late fee should remain at that rate. With all the on-street parking migrated to pay stations, the fee schedule now proposes an increase in the failure to pay overtime parking limit to thirty-five dollars. By way of regional comparison, the Port of Hood River assesses an equivalent non-payment fee of forty dollars. So this would, this is, this is closer or more consistent with the ports parking purposes down on waterfront. The city of Hood River currently issues a non-payment violation penalty after twenty-eight days of ten dollars. This fee has been static since two thousand fourteen. The current fee schedule proposes an increase to fifteen dollars. Again, by way of comparison, the Port of Hood River assesses an equivalent non-payment violation for thirty days after assurances of fifteen dollars. However, they additionally have progressive penalties after sixty days and ninety days of payment. The city of Hood River does not do that currently, and so we're proposing just a single increase to fifteen dollars. We discussed at the beginning, building fees. This consolidated fee schedule again incorporates building fees as part of the as part of the overall schedule. Most of the fees are proposed to coincide either the increase in the construction price index as we discussed, with two point seven percent. Additionally, hourly fees are adjusted to correspond with the cost of services to the city charged by the city, which are charged by the so you will see that there is some increase in hourly fees. Again, those are generally passed through and coincide with the cost of the city. SDC charges and rates are included in the fee schedule. Those have all been adjusted by the two point seven percent engineering new record construction cost index. I wanted to discuss that here because we will discuss in future meetings some FCS recommendations and potential revisions to the schedule as it exists in this in this fee schedule. So this, these SDCs are increased two point seven percent, but there will be council discussions, input and additionally potentially requests for a new SDC schedule as we go down that process. Utility rates, so two thousand, the fiscal twenty twenty-four, twenty-five is the fourth year of the city's current five-year utility rate plan. The fees that you'll see in this schedule have been updated to reflect what was proposed in that five-year study. It should be noted that the inflation rate in that five-year study was below what has been actually experienced. So we will explore during the budget process whether there should be a revised study for the utility rates ahead of the expiration of the current five-year schedule. That said, this schedule incorporates the proposals in that original five-year study. There are some additional other changes in utility schedule, delinquent payment fee increase. This is currently a six dollar fee. This is a six dollar fee. The fee schedule recommends an increase of the delinquent pay payment fee. So this is thirty days past due to ten dollars. This proposed increase puts the city's delinquent fee on an equivalent level with other regional providers. Ice Fountain, Crystal Springs and Bend, Oregon, all have comparable delinquent fees of ten dollars or higher. Bulk water sales. You'll see that there is a revised fee of five hundred dollars for up to ten thousand gallons of bulk water and a new proposed fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars for bulk water sales and greater of ten thousand gallons per day. Bulk water sales are provided by the city of Hood River primarily to commercial contractors for water trucks used during commercial instructions. As neighboring municipalities increase fees, it would become obvious the city Hood River was significantly undercharging for this for this water. And so these fees are again to be more consistent with regional providers so that the city of River is not subsidizing these construction projects in in that manner. I will note that this fee does not impact city projects as city projects are not charged. Pre-treatment of administrative fines and enforced for permitted and enforcement for permitted industrial users. So the Hood River Municipal Code in sections twelve oh six one hundred and twelve oh six one ten established administrative enforcement remedies for fines for violations of permitted discharges earlier during this fiscal year. Two fees were added to the fee schedule. This schedule now includes additional additional incursion fines that are included in the municipal code and have now been added to the consultant schedule. And these requirements are all consistent with municipal codes. Lastly, I would note that this fee schedule does include maximum tax rate increases. This is, this is a fee that does not normally coincide with the fiscal year. These are usually calendar year fees. So the the inflation index appears on this consolidated fee schedule, but they would be incorporated formally by council action closer to the calendar year. So the schedule and fee schedule book as well as a resolution is attached to to your materials and available for any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Question? Mark?
Thank you, Chris. When when we have the policy discussion about putting together a set of carrots for the table, I was like, I assume we can in any we can go ahead and tweak these numbers.
Yes, that's correct. So so that will that would, that discussion will specifically happen during the SDC presentations and conversations. And so as part of that, there will be the overall discussion of SDC fees, what would be max? So as my my understanding is that those conferences will include what sort of the maximum SDCs that the city can charge? What's SDCs will the city actually charge, right? And what incentives would be available for sort of middle or other types of housing?
I think for today, it's, you know, I have daydreams of other fees trying to make the picture prettier for things we want. But for today, it's just we we can at any time of the year go in and tweak these things with a resolution. Thanks. Great. This may be a super big thing. In our schedule under purping, we seem to have fine, thirty-nine dollars, ninety-nine dollars. Except for the few that we have, thirty-five dollars. Do we want to make all thirty-nine dollars in fractions with the other ninety-nine dollars fractions? Is that the thing that we care about? Does it bother anyone else like the slight difference? No, we need to differentiate dollars on those.
Hopefully we're gonna stand out this column, not in practice at this one.
Okay. We're not interested in changing those, fine. Was the thing that caught my eye.
That would have kept it my eye. But it does make me concerned about that.
Then the other thing that is more salient is I'm interested about the eighty-five percent on-street parking percentage. And if we're forecasting that same rate going forward. Because if we're not going to hit that same number, then something we're below our pressure.
Yeah, I I can only communicate what was in the reports, right? And so, you know, I mean, the the original traffic study. I'm only familiar with them because I just reviewed them. So the original, the original traffic study sort of clearly indicated there was an eighty-five percent threshold. The two thousand twenty-two study, curiously enough, indicated that there was a slight reduction on-street parking space numbers. And you know, some as a result of just realignment, maybe striping, some as a result of the parklets. Right? And in general, it it did not indicate that the overall downtown parking system had an eighty-five percent occupancy rate, right? But what we would consider the core sort of shopping area was significantly hitting eighty-five percent occupancy, right? But the 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 release pressure valves were some some outside areas like again, like Sherman Avenue. You know, and sort of things that would would not be sort of first place to look for parking. So absent a significant new supply like a parking garage and understanding that there will be some additional residential housing planned in the downtown area that would sort of also have a demand for additional parking. I I do not see anything that significantly changes sort of the, you know, the or creates a pressure release valve that we see something that would sort of change the short term.
And then related, was there a timeframe attached to eighty-five percent metric?
I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a it's either an overall system or a peak demands, you know, sort of peak demand time. So peak demand in downtown, I'm curious enough, is like new to two seven days a week, right? It doesn't really necessarily swing that much between weekend and weekdays. You know, and then and then obviously it depends outside of peak demand.
And I'm gonna have Mark maybe follow up since he was actually on the parking committee, but a lot of this which is coming out of the parking study is really at some point the council's commitment to say, okay, we're not just gonna take the snapshot in twenty seventeen or whatever it was. But that we're gonna regularly be doing these parking counts and then adjusting what we do based on them. And so the kind of thing of, okay, if raising the rate twenty-five cents suddenly means in the next parking count, and I don't know how often we're doing those over a few years. You know, we've gone under, you either can back up, you know, you're charging or you just keep it, you know, or something like that. You may, we just keep it steady for a really long time until if or when you got up to eighty-five again, and then you would have to respond. But that's kind of what we're doing with those lots, although we've seen no real movement in them. We keep raising it to say at some point, supply and demand, like there should be a shift and people should go to the incredibly cheaper Columbia lot. Maybe I've been amazed at how stepping those a bit. But with the design of those and the same with the on-street is that, yeah, it's a responsive adaptive management approach versus an instantaneous change that doesn't get looked at again. And that does require future councils beyond us to continue said approach.
So, yeah, and we should be doing a twenty-four count and I'm not sure where we are, but that would be one I have talked about a few times. The the downtown core, we, the the parking study really indicates that you should look at it in, you know, if on industrial or on Columbia, it's at fifty percent and oak, it is at ninety percent. You crank up the price, you know, it's it's you are actively trying to steer people to where there is parking by increasing prices, just like the parking lot thing. And if people don't care and they're willing to pay, then that's, that's, that's fine. But there should be some active, we do a count, we look at, you know, where's the low, low use, where's the high use? And then we adjust the prices on the CalA machines. You know, annually probably, or or at least when we do the count, so.
On that topic, the parking study committee expert, now that we're all CalA'd up, I mean, I could imagine that you flip a switch and July first, boop, they get more expensive and just boop, they get less and east of seconds, boop, they get more expensive. I assume we're not gonna do that.
I I don't know if we can do that. I'm assuming we can. With the CalA machines, I'm assuming at some point we can do dynamic, you know, either dynamic pricing either by time of day or sort of area. But I cannot speak to the type to the capabilities of the But I cannot speak to the type, to the capabilities of the callie machines.
Because it does seem like in a, even a reasonable world, far from a perfect world, the. The G Willikers price and the Blue Mountain Networks price would be different.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I will know in the parking study, the two thousand and eighteen parking study dynamic pricing is, is sort of, is one of the tools. Again, I'm, I'm not certain as the capability of the callie machine, you know, sort of, or, or where we are and.
Personal opinion on that, and not that we wouldn't ever discuss it, but the public communication of something like that would be very challenging. If someone came down and said, okay, I'm gonna pay you, you know, a dollar fifty for here and suddenly it's four dollars because it's July fourth and everything's good, like.
Yeah. That's, I mean, that's fair, the consumer sentiment as far as we are dynamic pricing accepted, for example, hotels. Right? Versus where it's not, so for example, fast food, it, you know, is, will be a issue.
Yeah, I mean, Portland, Portland has dynamic pricing. You know, based on time of day and a lot of areas in downtown, Chicago does it. But yeah, it, it'd be an education, but. It exists, it's out there.
And the user experience really has changed, whereas it used to be. Only pick orders, but put it in, like now you do the callie machine and you say fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, forty five minutes and the price goes up. And I don't do the math of like, I need forty five minutes. Megan, the Megan clause, okay. Any other questions on the entire fee schedule? Tim, you all right?
I'm good, Mary, thanks.
Say that again, Tim?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
I want to publicly thank Chris for the much more readable format this year.
It did make a difference.
Thank you.
So Grant saw it like thirty five. Wouldn't have seen it.
That means we all read it, so.
Probably need to approve this, it's an action item. Move, Grant.
If he hasn't found it, I'll go. I move that the city council adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash oh three. Adopting the consolidated schedule of fees, rates and charges for the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five fiscal year.
Moved by Megan.
Second.
Second by Doug. Discussion.
You guys don't want to make all those numbers the same? Okay, fine, 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 fine.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye. Yes.
Opposed. Chair votes, I motion passes. Thank you, Chris. Climate pollution reduction grant.
You have fun with numbers.
Thank you, Mayor. We have been working with the Department of Environmental Quality, who has. Selected the city of Hood River as one of four cities within the state to distribute funds through competitive. Grant process. Pending outcome on EPA and various levels, levels of government to distribute funds to up to a hundred and fifty. Space efficient housing products, which would equate to about three million dollars in funds that the city would have. At their disposal, plus a modest increase for administrative fees. All you're being asked for tonight is a letter of commitment, whether you're interested in participating in this. Opportunity while then the state would then proceed to go out and continue its grant application through the feds. So we have prepared a letter on your behalf. It's largely in the form that they liked it. There is a couple of opportunities for you to comment on your commitments. I had placed in there possibly an opportunity for you to insert your. Your climate pledge as exhibit. It's not necessary, but you have a placeholder there. We're here to answer any questions that you may have. Hopefully by the fall, we'll know whether this thing has made it through the state and the feds. But this is our opportunity in the, the chain of government to, to say we're in or we're out.
Thank you. Just question.
So is.
Is there anything that's too good to be true? Is there?
From federal government to state government. We, we are, we're, I think we're cautiously optimistic that the, the state will be able to deliver. So, but if not, we are, we are not out any funds. So our investment has been through time and energy with state. Your commitment to really being prepared for this. We have a pretty good reputation as trying to really move this needle and invest our time and energy. And I think that's appreciated at the state level.
I, I mean, any federal money comes with federal strings, but it is a substantial admin. Fee, which feels better than most of the time we do this.
Yes, I think the one other thing I would add is this probably would put us to a, a top. Where we would now have federal auditing requirements that we don't currently meet. So that's the other workload that we would anticipate coming from this. We also don't know enough about the program to know what administration looks like, you know, what the application process might look like, what the reporting or compliance piece will be. But. We think this is a great opportunity and to be selected as one of four jurisdictions in the state bodes well. We assume that DEQ will hold our hand for much of this.
Congratulations to us and you for being the kind of group that gets chosen to be one of four, like we're proven to be good partners and. May, may it continue. Do we need to?
I, I move to approve the city's support letter to DEQ to participate in the climate pollution reduction grant.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Chair votes, I motion passes. O dot, Jackie.
All right, Mayor and Councillors, I am back once again to talk about Safe Routes School. So before you, you have a request to sign letters of commitments on two different grants. That the Safe Routes School Coordinator, Megan Rainey, will be applying for through the school district. And one is funding of the education grant, which funds the position. The Safe Routes School Coordinator position, and that one is in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a two-year period. The other one is a surface treatment program, part of the surface treatment program. And this one was, took a little bit of kind of puzzle piecing, how to figure out how we wanted to best utilize this because. We wanted to get that multi-use path in before the beginning of the next school year. And we felt that the thermoplastic in the paint and actually one thing I failed to mention earlier was the. Recession reflectors as, as part of the path. Were something that was fell within our budget, our current Safe Routes School budget. And so, as opposed to waiting for a grant, waiting to, or applying for a grant, waiting to see if we receive the funding. And then having to go through their process, which likely would have delayed it a school year. Though, since it fell within our budget, why don't we go ahead and do that pathway now and utilize their design team and their. Support for those problematic connectivity issues as well as. Looking at Seventeenth Street as well. And so those are the two grants that staff are recommending. Saying the letters of commitment in moving forward.
Question, Megan.
Hopefully a quick one, but for the kind of redesign of Seventeenth, what kind of stuff? Maybe we see that taking there, what does that look like?
Not entirely sure what that would look like. And whether it would be another demonstration project, whether it would just be. Having, getting feedback and having a team of designers give us some ideas that we, we could then choose to implement or not implement. I'm not a hundred percent sure what that would look like.
And I guess Abigail, you're comfortable with. How much that is and where it fits in priorities?
I think so. This, thank you for the question, councillor. I think this is part of the high priority in the plan. And this, as Adam said to me recently, I think it's a good idea to start from the schools and kind of branch out. And so this really falls to that rather than kind of picking pieces throughout the city. I think we, I talked to Adam last week and we're comfortable with what we anticipate the workload to be. With the demonstration project, we're really thankful that there's been a PSU group that had done some work and then we were able to. Evaluate which pieces we thought were, that we could easily implement and which ones were harder. So anticipate a similar process for this. Thank you.
Please, Megan.
So the surface treatment grant would be applied for by the city with the school as the second. They require the road authority to apply for that. So it's a letter of commitment. And the time. There's no financial transaction. O dot pays the consultant to do the work. And so that's kind of the beauty of that program. And then the time commitment for. City liaison is very minimal, like a walk audit. To look at what the constraints of Seventeenth, to look at the transitions on Belmont and May. That's, that's what we really like need them for, is that expertise to do those offset intersections.
Great, thank you, Megan.
And then. Yes, and then the other, the education grant is applied for by the school district. So.
Thank you for the clarification.
So, A, Megan mentioned three things before. Is one of them the school district grant that we're not? Part of, okay. And, and then B is the service treatment, you talked about multiple engineering. Development stuff, does the Pacific to Union, is that part of that or is that?
The, the Pacific to Union is the third grant that Megan was discussing. However, that. That area is not currently a priority for the city. I think. Going back to what Abigail was saying of starting from the schools and working out, there are few things that. Staff and city leadership have identified issues in terms of prioritizing that right now. A few being just. A, there hasn't really been community engagement to understand, you know. What those impacts could look like, whether it removes parking along Pacific Avenue or not. But there hasn't been that community engagement first to like then think about, to even get a concept before design. Another one being, yes, starting from the school, working out. We also have the Heights area. And we don't have a final design of how that twelve three is gonna connect. Along like the Dutch Brother, that intersection, that corner right there, if it's gonna go behind. So we don't really know how that back area is gonna connect into the Heights quite yet. And so, you know, we're not. Ready to get a design, we're not gonna be ready to implement this within the next grant cycle regardless. So the management that would take to. Support, you know, to be the liaison for this wasn't identified as a priority for the city.
So to be clear, there's a, there's a policy priority disagreement in this room. Where our staff didn't feel that one of the things that Megan was suggesting was something we wanted to actively.
However, you know, that is up for, you know, you have heard from Safe Routes School Coordinator asking for that sign on as well, so that's. Up for you guys to discuss.
So any questions on that point, Councilman Megan?
I, you know, we had the whole Safe Routes to School Plan that had priorities and everything, and I just can't remember exactly what it was called or how it looked. But like, where did Pacific fall in the, the kind of implementation that they are on creative?
I believe that Pacific is identified as a medium priority in the plan, so it has high medium and low priorities.
I believe that just because it was daunting. So it's, it's high reward, high A and cost. For that, for that piece, and I think that that's why I got a medium. I, I remember the discussion I was saying, this is really important, it's like, it's really hard, it shouldn't be really expensive, so. Let's do. The things we can do. So I, I personally, any opportunity, I mean, and it might be, you know, maybe the next grant cycle is, is the way to do it. But that one is a sort of a unique overlap between the Heights Plan, which goes. Pacific and the Safe Routes Plan, which is bringing people in for the Pacific. So anytime start align, I, I. I was, hope that we go ahead of it. That's not to say that I disagree with staff, that the bandwidth isn't super important, so, but that's a, that's a big one.
Question for staff about Pacific related. If, yeah, hypothetically, there would be a demonstration project in between or up. Twelve in between Pacific and Union. That would be something that we'd have to deal with O dot on and get approval, I'll jump through a lot of hoops to deal with.
Yes, that would take a lot of coordination with O dot. For sure.
I have one more. This grant would be applied for by the school district. And the letter that you're in your draft, it requires no staff. Or financial for the city and actually no involvement, which is kind of weird. But that's the O dot letter template that's in your packet that I.
I, I mean, I'm, from my end, that's a real red flag to say we can do engineering design of a city road without staff input. On that said design. That either seems like we wasted a bunch of time and energy on a design that staff won't or can't approve. Or we have to rework it, and so that feels like a disconnect.
And so again, our, our staff is recommending that we. Support the two that Jackie has mentioned and not the third one on Pacific. Other questions, comments? Anything else, Jackie, on this topic?
All right. So. Time to act, people.
And clarity, so letter of support for education grant, letter of commitment for the. Surface Treatment Grant, is that correct?
So the city would actually be submitting the application in this case for the Service Treatment Grant?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Sorry, it's confusing. Service Treatment Grant by the city, letter of commitment, and then the school district also has a letter of commitment for that. Education grant is by the school district with a letter of commitment by the city, same as the last grant. So the one two years ago, you did the same thing for, and the letter.
Two letter commitments versus letters of support.
Right.
No letters of support, two commitments.
The only, the third letter would, would be for Pacific and that is called a letter of approval.
So definitely no letters of support, two commitments, maybe an approval, okay.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna move that we submit or approve or sign, the mayor signs. I don't know who does that. Two letters of commitment, one for the education grant and one for the surface treatment grant as discussed tonight.
Abigail, does that get what you need?
That works, yep, thank you.
Moved by Saunders.
Second.
Second by Stupina. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed. Chair votes, I motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Two discussion items, will. It's only eight o'clock, we're doing so well.
Thank you, Mayor Blackburn, members of the city council. Tonight, we're going to talk about urea governance, structured membership again. So this discussion started with the Urban Renewal Agency back in December. Where the board decided to revisit their membership structure, bylaws and cost allocation with the city. And endorsed a phased approach where we start at the highest level of authority first, which is the governing board membership. Working our way through bylaws, if that impacts the advisory committee. Composition and then getting down to city cost, city agency cost allocation plans. So, given that we're starting at the top first with the governing membership of the governing board. That is actually decided by you, the city council, via ordinance. Which is why I'm here now instead of during the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. The city council discussed this at their January eighth meeting and decided. That they would like to get the input of the overlapping districts as to their interest in participating. Either as full governing board members or something less than that. Could be all the way down to just getting annual formalized reports or something in the middle. City staff contacted Hood River County, the Library District, Columbia Area Transit, the Parks and Rec District. The county school and the Hood River County School District and presented in front of the county library. Transit District. The remainder discussed, the school district of like. Parks and Rec District discussed this separately and their input was conveyed to staff via their executive directors. Generally, districts were appreciative of the request and interested in full participation. and interested in uh, full participation as voted governing board uh, members. Um, the exception was the library district, which was generally opposed to tax increment financing, financing operations. Uh, but didn't want, uh, but was interested in receiving more uh, regular presentations and updates on urban renewal activities. Um, the other uh, agencies uh, of the overlapping districts, um, were excited to bring their jurisdictional, uh, jurisdictions perspective and interested in participating. But there was also hesitancy around time commitment and availability. And generally, um, you know, I would see discussion kind of evolve into kind of a polling of like, are, would you actually go, would you actually go, would you actually go, kind of to the individual um, commitment um, to attend? Um, and so with that, uh, with that input received, staff has two recommendations, two equally weighted recommendations for your um, consideration tonight. Uh, one is still the city council only model, uh, which is typical of most urban cities. Uh, seventy-six percent of uh, urban cities use this structure. Uh, and it has uh, benefits us to efficiency, policy alignment with city goals. Um, and actually, I was kind of struck today um, as uh, kind of a vivid example when we have a controversial topic at the very beginning of the meeting. You know, when it's only the city council here, how you, how easily the Urban Renewal Agency uh, agenda can be moved uh, front or back uh, without individuals, uh, external individuals being here present, needing to wait and sit through that. Um, and the same is, uh, would be true for executive sessions could have a more uh, natural placement at the end of a meeting if it was only city council. Um, the city council plus taxing district representation though, would be recommended if um, you prioritize uh, integration and uh, communication with the other overlapping districts. Um, resides kind of physical, uh, visible recognition, but truly um, tangible uh, does um, delegation of decision-making authority to overlapping districts in recognition that they have a financial stake in the uh, project and investment decisions that the Urban Renewal Agency makes. Um, so if you wanted to go that way, um, we would uh, recommend, and this is based off the feedback, kind of observing that. The interest of the district was somewhat dependent on, was there a specific individual that was interested in participating when I was listening to their deliberations? That you may consider having unallocated district representative seats so that just the very most interested and available uh, candidates could request to be on the board and then appointed by the city council. Um, and I would also suggest having um, a flexible number of board seats. Um, that, uh, the city of Madras does this, they have a minimum and maximum. And the minimum uh, board is just the city council, but then they allow up to a maximum number of additional seats. And I believe um, that feature would allow the board seats to wax and wane, depending on whether or not you have uh, engaged uh, and, and willing members to fill those seats um, from the other overlapping districts. Um, I think it also allows um, the uh, the interested jurisdictions to change based on what the focus area, as the focus area of the agency evolves over time. So we're kind of coming to this question today because focus is moving away from areas that are of interest to port commissioners and moving more to the West Side, that's more of interest to the Parks District, um, the Transportation District, uh, and the County. Um, but uh, it's likely that Urban Renewal Agency activities will continue to evolve over time. I would think that this structure could give that flexibility as well as if the life of the uh, urban, of the waterfront district is extended, uh, giving the flexibility to keep the port uh, having some representation for a certain amount of time. Um, what I also would recommend though, along with that flexibility though, is uh, maintaining minimum two-year terms so that you don't have such churn that you lose institutional knowledge and history. And people are able to um, have the context they need to interact effectively. Um, and so um, those are kind of the two paths uh, based on uh, the input received and kind of the knowledge and research of other cities. Um, we have two suggested motions depending on which routes you want to go. In fact, this, the second option even kind of has a um, alternative embedded within it that if you wanted to set a discreet number of um, board seats or have a flexible uh, maximum uh, number, uh, that's embedded in there as well. Um, so if uh, one of these motions uh, looks good tonight, uh, we can come back with a uh, ordinance at your next meeting to enact the change. Um, or if you're not seeing what you like here, happy to take that input and come up with some different alternatives.
Great, thanks, Will. First question's for Will.
Um, in, in, in our side meeting, you talked about nine or eleven being logical total numbers of people. Could you, could you just go over that for everybody?
Oh, sure, uh, to avoid type votes, right? It's uh, good to keep a odd number of board seats. Um, but also you may wanna uh, can, there's also just the very practical consideration of how much physical space is here in the room? Should people want to?
So, or plus four, that's a question, right?
Yeah.
Uh, I guess I'd be most interested in just expediency, like which way you guys want to go? You want to go the first way or the second way? Should we get that out of the way first? Because if it's the first way, okay, great. First way, Grant's saying, city council seven is, it's a lovely number. Others?
Thank you.
I'll go.
Yeah.
City council only. First way.
Calling this the Megan way now. Is that the first way?
I, I favor the first way, but I'm a metal for the second way.
Yeah, Mark.
Did we, did we promise the second way when we did the presentations? Did we?
No, uh, the way, well, during the presentations, absolutely not, in the way that we reached out, absolutely not.
Okay.
Would, did they receive it? Uh, I think some of the districts received it as they're pending their invitation to come at the next meeting. Yeah, I think that was unavoidable.
I mean, we do want them to be involved, but, but organizationally, I, I like the first way.
I, I guess what's come into mind for me is we could, we could, I mean, not even like cherry coated, like sugar coated. Like we could say, look, we, we think expediently, it's like makes sense for it to be the seven. And in fact, seven out of nine, like it always has basically been, but we absolutely want your input. So let us know how we can keep you apprised and we, I mean, if we get a better from the county chiming in on the topic, like I think we're gonna take that seriously. So um, it's not like you're not on, you're not even a, an in-putter, but that, that's clear to me.
So I, I'm right in the room there, but I do want to really say we need to do more than just let us know when you have an opinion or write us a letter, but actually actively engage with them and, and invite them and inform them. Because it is just, you need to watch all our meetings to know what's going on and figure out when you have some, something that matters to you, and you can write us a letter. Like that is not community engagement, that is not actual engagement with our agency partners. We need to, to really be proactive and actually find ways, whether it's some individual meetings where we, I don't know, every year meet with all the other agencies or we inform them, we think there's a topic they're gonna be interested, or, or, you know, yeah, maybe Will's going and updating people. Or you're like, I don't know, but it needs to, it needs to be us reaching out, not just come, come tell us.
I thi, I think that's some good advocacy for the, for the second way, the more inclusive way. And I made a mistake, Tim, Tim said uh, that he preferred the, the city council only. And, and I attributed on the tally taking to, to Megan.
Oh, then you just have your fingers.
No, I just, I just made a mistake, so um, that, that, that I thought was, you just made a good point. More like membership leads to involvement, like.
Well, which, yes, and, and as you're well aware, and I've done before, is my advocacy for the second way. But as I can see, I'm not gonna get that, but I do want to say if we're doing the first way, there needs to be some other forms of actual advocacy and not kind of what Paulia just said of like, like write us a letter when you want to tell us something.
No, nothing in either way, we choose to go limits our proactivity and working with other districts. Nothing at all. We uh, whichever way we choose to go, we can proactively work together as much as we wish. Um, a concern that I have, if we open it up to everybody, is based on the response, it's, it's their interest in being involved, but not interested in the obligation and requirements as much as is anticipated in being a governing body and a board. Takes commitment to be here, be committed to doing this consistently. Um, that gives me pause with just opening it up, even if it's even at, at hog or at large. Because then people just could just come and go, even if we have two-year terms. There, they won't be necessarily committed to going through this entire process. That, that's a concern that I would have, going route two.
To me, that can be, I, I can, I can reconcile the point grants making with the idea of having it be only plus two instead of plus four. I think including people is uh, positive for community engagement and shares the, shares the responsibility. I mean, hey, you guys say you want to be involved, good, so you're on the board. You know, if, if it's truly, you know, not relevant seeming, you can save yourself the Tuesday evening. But um, have, having plus two with they don't always come every time, that, I'd be okay with that. So uh, let's, let's make a motion and see what carries. We're not.
I did, I just had a quick question about what you just said, Paul. If, if we add uh, more people on, we could make it to your terms potentially. Uh, how would we go? I have more questions about how we would go about administering that. Would, would these people be set people, would they wax and wane with levels of interest? Uh, how, how complicated are we making this if it's opened up to outlarge positions or it, but in coming onto this board just based on levels and interest based on one particular decision?
I thought Will made that point pretty well, that you can't be interested for three months, it's a two-year term. And so the way, in my opinion, that one look is the next two-year term, the, 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 the plus two consists of a port commissioner and uh, Parks and Rec Commissioner. And they would choose someone to fill that spot for two years, and then in two years, that could be re-upped or changed.
Mayor, Mayor Blackburn, if I may, uh, to, something I didn't mention, uh, I should uh, be explicit as in recommended in the motion is to have it be only governing board, uh, members of other governing boards, not their executive directors or general ad hoc.
Only electeds.
Only electeds.
Thank you, Will.
Yeah.
Great.
There's a follow-up to that, yeah, and then, um, uh, it, yeah, if um, if it's two-year terms, if we're working on a project, we're kind of come to a decision over a span of three, six months. After that.
Yeah.
There's, they're still hanging out.
That's breaks.
Potentially your half, yeah, and there, there might not be any of the projects that they're necessarily, agency is involved or interested in. So then we have to change seats.
They could resign.
Just as, to me, it adds additional level of complexity.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think Megan's point is well warranted regarding, you know, working with inter, you know, governmental entities and, and all of that. Um, I, you know, it's, I, I guess, I guess if there's some perspective from more senior counselors on the bench, um, you know, I, I definitely saw, you know, through my tenure, just not a lot of involvement from the port members. Because I would probably not be very involved either, you know, if, if it wasn't directly related to my job. Uh, and uh, and, and, and I'm, 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 at the same time, I, I don't want to sort of just say, well, you know, we've, we've given you, this, this is an example of, of us reaching out. If, if that's not the way to do it though, what is the way to do it? You know, like Megan said, reaching out to agencies where we feel that something is in, that they should be paying attention to, et cetera. I'm not sure if we can increase that, but it's, you know, I don't see a lot of other agencies showing up uh, to do the, to, to participate necessarily in meetings, um, certainly outside of meetings. What's, what, what's, what's the best way to truly, you know, collaborate? Is, is it, that's what I'm struggling with, is, is it to invite them uh, as board members or is it to do more outreach? Um, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
So, so, you know, Megan and I come down on sort of different gut reaction of the way to do it. But both of us, and I completely agree with you, Megan, that it has to be more real than we've made it to date. The, the interaction, and, and I think it's just, and we have to be intentional, we have to follow through on things. We have to invite them, you know, to work sessions, you know, there, there's real things we can do when a decision is um, truly impacts multiple jurisdictions. Um, uh, I, you know, I don't know what we can do to commit to that besides saying we're gonna commit to that, but um, I, I think that that's what's needed. Um, I mean, I certainly fall back to the, the membership of the agency is simplest if it's just the council, and then let's just do a darn good job um, of, of interacting with people, you know, when, when we talk about West Side Parks, Parks and Rec better be here, and the county better be here. Um, when we talk about roads, cat, we better listen to them carefully. So um, so I, I don't think that there, I don't think the organization says how we're gonna ignore or not ignore some organization.
I remember when I was visiting with Pat McAllister, who was the general manager of Hood River Supply up here on the Heights. And he was on URAK, and he said, yeah, I'm staying on URAK until, you know, the Heights thing gets figured out because it's very important to my business. Like, he realized, yep, that's the deal, I'm, I, I got bacon in this skillet, so I'm, I'm, I'm being here for now. And URAK really served a meaningful function in that, in that way, so.
So, yeah, and I'm gonna agree with Mark that, yes, this mechanism isn't the only way or, or the needed way to do engagement. Um, I, I, yes, we need engagement, I do. I'm gonna advocate for the thing, and I know I'm losing, but I do think it is a way to say not just, oh, we've identified, we're gonna explicitly talk about parks or cat or the road, and we're gonna go talk to you. But it builds that space where we're both more aware of what the other is doing, and you can find places where you can actually collaborate and win-win without having to be like, oh, today, we're gonna talk about this one park that we've already identified. Um, but actually a space of like, okay, as we're exploring, you know, how we're gonna spend some money on an intersection, like maybe there's a way that something makes sense with like cat going, oh, well, we were just talking about how that intersection might do X, Y, Z. Um, and again, that doesn't have to be on this board, the board is certainly one of the easiest ways for something that we're currently not good at. Um, which is part of why I'm advocating for it, but if we actually do it in other ways, there are clearly roots for that, but I want them on.
Yeah, that's clear, so let's just do a motion and decide. I mean, we're so, we're so unused to having failed motions, like.
Well, so I'll, I'll.
People vote, and you feel bad about it.
I'll put it out there, and I know what the answer will be, but.
Good, this will further the cause.
So I move to direct staff to return with an ordinance that modifies the governing board of the Urban Renewal Agency to be um, a separately comprised board of the full Hood River City Council and two to four seats filled by appointed governing board members from overlapping taxing districts.
Moved by Megan. Motion fails for lack of second. That was helpful, thank you. Will, will somebody else make another motion?
I move to direct staff to return with an ordinance that modifies the governing board of the Urban Renewal Agency to be the membership of the River City Council.
Moved by Grant.
Second.
Second by Tim. Discussion. All in favor?
I, yes.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed by Megan. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you all. And Chris again.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Um, so in front of you for discussion purposes is the second quarter uh, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, um, fiscal year financial performance report. Uh, this outlines um, data received for the first half of the fiscal year, commenced in July first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and this reflects financial data through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Um, this report uh, compares budget, actuals through uh, December twenty twenty-three, year-end estimates, and then um, obviously comparisons to that budget as well as a comparison for the same time period uh, for the previous fiscal year. Revenue through Q two for the twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-four was six point five million. That's sixty-one percent of the annual budget of revenue of ten point six million, fifty percent through the year. Um, obviously, this includes the bulk receipt of property taxes. Um, so you would expect that to be greater than fifty percent of the revenue. Um so you would expect that it'd be greater than fifty percent of the revenue. Um revenue receipts do also include the one-time transfer of the general obligation bond reserve to the general fund. Uh adjusted for one-time revenue receipts for the second quarter. Um and that is sort of adjusting, uh so backing out the one-time uh general fund receipt of the. Uh the GO bond reserve um as well as backing out uh the COVID relief funds for the prior fiscal year. Um recurring revenues were three point one percent greater than for the same period one year earlier. Um year end estimates of revenue and expenses are based on historical trends. Uh this is now a six-month trend. Um so utilizing this trend data, uh uh we did see some continuations uh of um revenues that were below expectations. Or below budget, uh transit lodging tax uh continued to lower trend, uh about thirteen percent below budget. Um that's about six percent but below the previous year. I'll discuss more of that in a in a moment. Um additional trends were uh local marijuana taxes, twenty-three point four percent below budget. Um parking meter receipts, ten point eight percent below budget. Um this continues similar trends that we saw in the first uh the first fiscal year. I'm sorry, the first quarter of the fiscal year. Um so uh given the six-month trend, it's anticipated uh and the uh the year-end estimates and projections. Uh are based that these trends will consider. You'll continue. Um so obviously, uh the two sort of tourist-related or at least visitor-related revenues. Uh transit lodging tax um and parking meter receipts were down. Um parking meters down eleven percent, transit lodging tax down twelve point nine percent. Um it should be noted uh that transient lodging tax um obviously is tied to uh hotel revenue and occupancy. Um both can be volatile, um both are dynamic and pricing. Uh we originally projected the budget at about a seven percent increase. This was based off an HVS market report. Um it should be noted uh that at the time, if you look at sort of Portland Metro and and regional areas. Uh the hotel market was fairly healthy. Um it was a nineteen percent increase in overall revenues um from January through May of twenty twenty-three. Uh we then saw a decrease from June through October of negative one percent. Um so the market very, very quickly moved from a thirty percent rate of increase in the first quarter, nineteen percent increase. Uh of revenues in the first half of the calendar year um to sort of flat to negative. Uh you know, sort of in the months that 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 followed. Um we saw the same thing here in Hood River. Um and so that impacts obviously uh the revenue receipts, uh TLT revenue receipts, and then um you know, just overall general visits. Um we are projecting that for the for the year end. Uh we will see TLT revenue um sort of flat to slightly down uh versus last fiscal year. Um we discussed last time that single largest revenue uh change um is in intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues. Uh we had projected that the Oregon Fire Service Capacity Grant, the amount of three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, and that was budgeted. For this fiscal year actually was received last fiscal year. Um so that is in our uh in our budget, um but obviously will not be received because it was a hit last year's budget or last year's actuals. Um so in general, general fund revenues are approximately four and a half below budget expectations. Uh for utilities and other major revenue sources, they are all within about two percent of budget expectations. Um so uh in line with what the with uh what was budgeted. Um. And that that is three point seven percent uh growth over the previous fiscal year. Again, that's utility and other major revenues. Um through Q two, uh the general fund revenues and expenditures are generally in balance despite the overall decrease. Uh in the four and a half percent decrease below budget. Um we are projecting a very small fiscal year operating surplus, um you know, so or at the very least a sort of balanced budget. Um bank balances of pooled cash and investments, excuse me. For all funds, including the Urban Renewal Agency, were twenty-five point six million dollars as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And that's a two point three percent year-over-year increase for the period one year prior.
And is that not a paragraph on this page, Chris?
Yes. Yes, so if you if you look on that on that chart.
Yes.
So look at the yellow box. Yeah, so like actually those boxes for yellow boxes is that that's the pool investment. If you uh go over to the left. Um you'll see the audit beginning balance, the projected change in fund balance, right, and the revised uh overall general fund balance. Yeah.
Questions, Chris?
Uh yeah, I I you know, obviously a lot of weather-dependent uh sorts of scenarios here with, you know, transient lodging tax. I'm assuming cannabis tax is somewhat related um to that as well, being, you know, bad weather events and whatnot. I'm just wondering, you know, if there's any quality, you know, since it's such a, uh you know, big delta for for revenue for the city. Uh the type of qualitative analysis that's that we should be discussing with, you know, uh visited River, et cetera, about. Are there any greater trends, you know, within weather? Um certainly. Ice is seeming to come up a lot more, right? So, you know, that versus snow, which is a little easier to deal with, right? So are there any trends that are correlated? A little bit more towards. Weather trends uh that we can, we can, you know, bounce this against.
Yeah, I so uh. Given my experience and given the 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 reports I've read, um I think what we're seeing is is beyond just weather related.
Okay.
Right? So this is, this is is really pairing um some greater sort of tourism. Uh issues that you're seeing in in sort of starting in the Portland Metro area um and expanding out to the to the other regional areas. Um so our swings have not been as uh have have not been as dramatic as a sort of Portland Metro. Um because some of the tourists, you know, because a lot of the activity sort of is is sort of drive. Uh sort of drive markets, um but I I think we are experiencing overall trends. So I, you know, so I think that my experience would be it's really, really difficult to forecast the weather, right? When you're sort of economics, right? Um but we, I think we do to to try to do a better job uh finding better regional data. Um and so that would be, you know, sort of uh STR reports, um which are used by a lot of the local providers. Um and so maybe just trying to get some better intel, you know, sort of regionally. When locally.
Thank you.
Other other bit of, we've got a couple of things that are trying to blow projected revenues. Um and this is maybe for you and Abigail of and I and I see we're still going to kind of have the balance budget, so hopefully the answer is not much, but. Are there um projects or things looking on that time lensing to be extended a bit or things need to be downgraded a bit to to? Keep things within budget or are there concerns as we go into the next two quarters? That that may occur and we need to make some changes kind of last minute or what's that looking of doing like?
Yeah, so I think that there's a, so the initial nuance on that is that a lot of the projects are not occurring in the general fund. But a lot of the projects are occurring at the at the sort of restricted revenue level, right? So um. So the. And we are looking at trying to balance uh construction schedules, construction timing, overall, overall project capacity and ability. Based upon the revenues that are received from, you know, sort of in the utility area. Um and and we will discuss that more as we begin to look at the the potential of revenue bonds, right? What is the, what is the capacity that is supported by the recurring revenue that we're receiving? Uh so the real concern on the general fund level, and I and I and I think we'll talk about this in the future as well. Um yes, there is a concern that expenses are going to outpace revenues. Um and that's a function of property taxes being pegged at sort of three percent increases and expenses is not necessarily sort of. Not necessarily so, uh particularly as you look at sort of labor and overall uh benefits expenses, right? Things that are a significant portion of the general fund budget and not and are outpacing inflation and certainly outpacing revenues. Um so uh you know, we will talk about in the future sort of ways to expand the general fund revenue base. Um keep in mind that some of those things are a little more volatile, right? Uh they do have the potential to grow uh greater than inflation, but they also have the tend, you know, like TLT have the potential to lag. Um but yeah, so I think that the focus is both on growing revenues um as far as keeping an eye on on sort of expenses at the general fund level.
I guess, Mark, for this fiscal year, are things on track or do we need to scale down?
I mean, I, this is, this is. This is going to be unpopular, right? But I think that, you know, there are some projects that would have been, there are some projects that are being funded by the general fund. Uh that we're not intended to this year. Um so for example, the DeHidro project, we were hoping and counting on. Um you know, that those being grant funds that was going to pay for that project. Um and you know, and and those are coming out of the general fund at the moment, right? So um to the extent that that we can limit projects out of the general fund and direct them. Uh to the to the the funds that actually have sort of um, you know, sort of user-based revenue to them. Uh you know, that sort of helps us budget and plan. So.
So and this may be for Abigail, it would be nice to get an update on what what is or isn't going to be happening, you know, what's the lead?
We can do that. Thank you. And I want to um mention just internally, Chris has been working very closely with Haley Ellis and Adam Schmidt to. Really um try to get those projects, our CIP projects, like. Um down in as to what are the sources of funding, what are the expenses, um where are we in those projects? Because so many of those projects have multiple sources of funding, they extend multiple years. Um Chris done a great job of really creating a project um spreadsheets. Uh that help us attract those, track those items much more closely.
Yeah, so along those lines, I think the mechanism by which you'll see what projects are sort of budgeted, what's the what's planned. Um you know, sort of what's getting pushed back or what's sort of in the future years is going to be in the in the budget document. And so that that uh that that CIP projection, which will show the projects and sort of when they're slated for uh when they're slated to begin.
So I I I just want to steep this and then and then you tell me if I'm wrong or not. So so right now it looks like we're going to use about eight percent of our ending cash. It is a condition need to get, you know, that four hundred thousand dollars for this year. And and then it really just is an exercise in in twenty-four, twenty-five budgeting, it's just saying. You know, it it's not like we have to dig out of a big hole. It's just like, okay, we need, we we were off this year. How do we? How do we adjust the crystal ball for the next year? Is it? So to me, it doesn't feel like a panic, but it's a, oh, we better, we better look at that pretty carefully for the next year. Is that, is that a truism?
I I mean, I think that's fair, right? I mean, I I guess from for for conservative per, for conservative purchase purposes. We have assumed uh for projections that we are using the contingency. Right? So there there now, um I think we will use some of the contingency. I don't know that we will use all of it. Uh so so I mean, and 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 I would say that sort of part of, part of. Our jobs as as the department directors is to is to manage that, right? Um and so so we, you know, we will, we will see. Um you know, but you know, that is, that is the hope, right, that that the that we will not use all the contingency, but for for conservative purposes, we have assumed that we're using it. Um to the to your second point, right, I mean, do we need to be cautious or do we need to be? Uh sort of aware of of potential budget constraints? Sure, you know, I I agree with that.
So so to me, you know, I I I applaud the information coming to us and and this is exactly why we've budgeted big. In your cash so that we can get through things like this. So so this is, to me, I don't think this is the. Um doesn't reflect poorly on us. It reflects on us learning and and adjusting, so.
Yeah, I just, I, you know. I'm not surprised by the swing in the in the transient lodging tax, right? I mean, that that again. I find that revenue tends to be fairly volatile, right? And it will, it will sort of, it will move. Um that's, you know, that's the, that's the difficulty of hotel operations. It's the difficulty of having a revenue source that's tied to total operations. Um you know, I think that to the benefit, we are seeing expenses coming in line with what we expected, if not below. Um you know, and most other major revenue categories are sort of in line. And so there's, there is nothing in here other than just the realities of. Inflation and you know, sort of employee expenses and benefit expenses and just the things that are that every government is experiencing. And that Hood River is also experiencing, right? That that's sort of, there there's, there is nothing sort of unique to the city that is that. That I view as being concerned.
You had a little more context around TRT?
Yeah. I would love to.
Yeah, uh generally, and this has been something that I've been working on for a while now. Um demand's been flagging. Um I expect Q three to be another generally. Punch the gut when times comes to budgeted versus expectations. And not just because of the weather, the weather was temporary, even when we had had volatile weather in the past, it hasn't made much of a difference in our receipts. Generally, uh for demand as a whole, the market is much, much softer. Uh than it's been before. Um this, this kind of softness in the market hasn't been seen since two thousand eight. Uh in terms of. Demand drop off and whatnot. Yeah. Um so, I mean, barring COVID, COVID is a different thing. I'm. I. I am not, I don't share the op, as optimistic of an outlook as Chris does. Um so I would be very careful if I were us to. Budget that full amount or that same flat of flat about for this next year. Um what I'm seeing on the ground, and I do get the start reports, um is. Uh softness in demand, uh of course, over the winter, and that's especially where our numbers are down so much. Uh but in in both shoulders, spring and fall. Um summer was buoyed up by events, uh weddings and that sort of thing, but even then. Um occupancy percent in the summer is down year over year, and it's generally, it's been down year over year for the past year.
Post, post-COVID thing? There was that revenge travel they talked.
There there was, yeah, yeah, yeah. There were, there was a lot of pent up demand. People wanted to get together, travel and do that sort of thing. Um and then costs skyrocketed and rates jumped up and whatnot. Um so margins overall. Whatever, did whatever they did. Um and so now you're seeing a lot of that pull back. However, the percent of occupancy demand is pulling back. Uh a whole lot more than it did even to pre-COVID. Um so that that's, that's the biggest concern from the industry perspective. Because what what that means is if that continues to hold back, especially in the shoulder seasons, uh you're going to see increasing. Uh the price wars and that sort of thing, which is just going to drive revenue straight down. Is we only have so many rooms and we only fill so many of them. So if. We're going to drop, drop revenue straight down if we get into a bloody price war. Um even with new hotels coming online, whenever they come online. In a time of reducing occupancy percent, that won't matter. So we could put more rooms on the market, won't make a difference. They'll just spread it out more amongst more people. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a point of concern for everyone. And as we go through, as we go forward, I I would, I would caution that on that revenue source. Quite a bit.
Good. One of those budget committee meetings, Abigail?
Uh I'll work with the finance director and city recorder to get an email out to you with uh some potential dates. Coming up, late April, early May.
I mean, I should, we will, we will be talking about, we will be talking about TLT, I I think in the in the very, very near future. Um I mean, I I uh Counselor Fossen is correct, I'm not quite as bleak on my outlook. Um as, you know, I I do think that there are, and I I will say the other thing I think is impacting this market. Portland, Portland Metro, Portland Downtown has been, has been difficult. Uh and they've seen a lot of supply, particularly around the convention center. Um they've, they've really, really seen a decrease in rates, um a lot of availability and supply. Um and keep in mind, this is a, this is a power drive, right? And so I think you'll that at some point, hotel rates in Portland just get so cheap that people do Hood River as a day trip. As opposed to an overnight stay. And so, um and so, uh. Um there is projections that the Portland market should be recovering. Um there is some indication that the Portland market is recovering. Uh and so, you know, sort of um high water sort of raises all boats, right? And I I think there will be some sort of recovery here in in. Uh I will also say that um as part of the discussion that we'll have in the future. Uh developers do see sort of a, you know, an improved future. Um as far as projections for Hood River to the point where they're, you know, sort of potentially looking to expand or or sort of expand projects, right? So the longer term vision, right, is is. If you look at, if if you look to the development community, which I'll never tell you you should, if you look to the development, look to the development community, that, you know, they're telling you. Um that they're looking for a recovery in this market.
Other questions for Chris?
All right, good job. Thank you. I believe there's no motion required, so.
All right, good job. Thank you. I believe there's no motion required, so.
Moving on, city recorder, Jen. Abigail?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give you, and I'll make this quick, uh, an update on some of the legislation that recently passed. The uh Oregon Legislature has closed their short session. Um, I'm going to start by calling on Dustin uh to come on up and talk a little bit about um Senate Bill uh fifteen thirty-seven.
Thank you. Uh, it is eight thirty, so. Uh, one of the main pushes this, this session was the, you you heard about it, was the Governor's Housing Production Bill. Aimed at producing thirty-six thousand dwellings per year within the state. Uh, that came out in two Senate bills, uh Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven and fifteen thirty, uh, which focused on funding a big financial assistance package that came along with that, between five hundred million dollars. Plus or minus, uh, the establishment of a housing accountability production office, uh, which is more government at the state level to help provide um guidance and possibly sanctions uh to not uh steering the ship correctly on the local implementation level. Uh, mandatory adjustments provision, which is uh going to impact on you'll hear more about that when it comes to our um our audit. Um, requiring, uh, in the past, we had clear and objective standards for residential. We are now looking at possibly requiring mandatory adjustments uh to those clear and objective standards if if asked. Um, the, it will also change some of the method of approvals for uh things that we do. Things that used to go before public bodies such as planning commission will be required to be reviewed administratively. Um, U G B amendment provision, which would allow cities expedited pass to expand their urban growth boundary. And that's going to have a little impact on us, um, as we have a national scenic area on one side of town as, and on the other side, uh, a high-value resource land uh which are not eligible for um expedited. So we could take in a cemetery, uh, Point S, uh, the Bonneville Power Life Station and maybe a New Life Church and Brian Pike, um, not really the high-value housing production area that we uh really that this was intended to fulfill. So, uh, it's kind of a pass on that one and uh but really that that was the big push, um, both supported uh forty-eight to eight, I believe, or the boats were very high. Both, both House and Senate voted for it. It had a support across party lines, so this day and age relatively popular. So, coming to uh government near you, uh, we'll talk, again, we'll talk about it more, um, when we do our audit. It will have some impacts, things that we'll want to be ready for when we do the audit and uh how we adjust code, uh, how code has been will be adjusted on your behalf moving forward. Thank you, Justin.
All right, I want to talk about a couple others. Uh, Dustin just barely mentioned uh Senate Bill fifteen thirty. Nope, that's, I will, I, I get, I'll share this good news. Uh, thanks to the good work of Dustin and Will, Adam and Chris, uh, we put together a request for infrastructure uh which was funded in the amount of two million, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars for water, stormwater and sewer uh improvements for the Rand Road Housing Project. So our thanks to our local legislators and to all of you and to staff who really uh pushed that through, made that happen. Other ones to note, uh, House Bill four thousand and two recriminalizes the possession of small amounts of hard drugs such as uh cocaine and fentanyl, so I'm waiting for more details, but we, I think we all knew that was going to be a priority for the legislature. Uh, and then um how Senate Bill fifteen seventy-six adjusts uh adjusts the recreational immunity law. So you might remember, uh, there was a court case recently that put recreational immunity into question. Um, this is a temporary fix. Legislature has committed to studying this issue in the off-season and coming back in next session with a more permanent fix. But um risk managers are very happy about this, so we are happy as well. Jen just uh let me know that uh the budget meetings are scheduled for May first, May eighth and May fifteenth. And then finally, uh, today's been a big money day. We've just talked about the um money from the legislature. We have this opportunity with D E Q. Um, Will, a couple of weeks ago, also got a call from ODOT saying they'd like to submit a congressionally-directed spending request on our behalf for the elevated sidewalk. So we don't know uh very much about that yet. It was very much a last-minute phone call. But I think this really speaks to the reputation uh the city of Hood River has with the state uh that we are a trusted partner, um, and they're willing to and looking for us to do projects with them. So I'm really pleased and proud to to bring those news to you. So thank you for your support and thanks so much for our staff for working on these items.
Thanks, Abigail. Anything else? Committee reports, Tim.
Well, thank you, Mayor. None.
Megan?
Um, had another Saruda sister city board meeting. The main slash only focus is, uh, we have some guests from Saruda coming to town Wednesday, and we'll be here, I think, until Monday. Very, very quick was a small group, but um one of our first real, this is, this is some middle school kids, so really the first foray back into school kids coming, coming and going since the pandemic. So exciting news and hopefully the start of, you know, rebounding commitment from both sides.
Are you going to dinner Wednesday night with them?
I am. Are you going to be there?
Me too.
Great.
Anything else, Megan?
I guess I, um, if other counselors are interested, oh, I don't know if I'm allowed to, I don't, I'll find out and I'll get back to you.
Mark? None? Grant?
Nothing.
I have two more updates from the Housing Authority, um, the the Hood River money. And then like, two hours later, I found out that uh the West Clickatatt County uh assisted living project, which had been sort of side, put, put on the sidetrack because it just wasn't progressing. Uh, Gina Mossbrucker got us three million bucks for that, so that's not the whole project, but you know, that's real money. And then the Chenoweth project right next to Home Depot in the Dalles got three million-ish dollars also, so lots of successes in uh housing from the state legislature. I, I, I uh have been re- re- reinvigorating my efforts to keep track of like is that the middle three million or the first three million? Because, you know, you see the headline and everybody wants to cheer the collaboration and the subtext can be hard to read. So like, you know, Rand Road has made substantial project. Uh, West Clickatatt Senior Living has a long road ahead of it, but tho- those were good pieces of news. What's that? Well, that was committee reports. Tim said nothing. Yeah, I think. Um, and then a a mayor comment, and then I'll go to council comments, is uh on April eighth, Mark and I will both be watching the eclipse. So at that city council meeting, the mayor will be gone and the council president will be gone. My idea would be that senior counselor Megan would chair that meeting, but she doesn't know that yet. So let's think about how we want that to go. I don't imagine that either of us chairing it from Zoom would make sense. But uh, that's, that's, let's talk about that off-off season, but that's coming up in 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 a month. Okay, now, any other comments from counselors? Tim? Doug?
No.
Megan?
Nothing.
Mark?
Hi. Uh, and and I blame Grant personally for this, which is Oak, Oak Street is closed between third and first right now. And and the number of people that said we should keep it that way. So I, and I, and I've been telling everyone like, that's nutty, it's not going to happen, it's too big and stuff. But what if we did a demonstrator for some short amount of time after the light's done? Um, that, that's the seed I want to plant that maybe crazy is okay a little bit, so, um, there we go.
I look forward to hearing ODOT's reaction to this.
I'm also interested in that, Mark. Thank you for that. Me too. I commute through there every day and often forget to turn left on third, but watching us all adjust is quite interesting.
I've had multiple people say turning down first and then being able to make a right on to, on to second is awesome.
Anything else, Mark?
No.
Grant?
I'm just going to bask over here. Um, uh, one, one thing that we should be aware of. Hood River Bridge has got some funding, which is cool, and they just got um a, a couple of awards. So another eight million dollars, yay. Um, so that's nice. Uh, one thing that is of import um is we have committed seventy-five million dollars from Washington, uh twenty from Oregon. Uh, the twenty from Oregon is in the lottery bond funds. Uh, one thing that would be helpful in the future is uh for Oregon to to match Washington funds. Uh, and the reason why that's important is Washington just yesterday, today, this morning, whenever it was, last short amount of time uh switched their formula in how they're going to allocate funds from a mix of state and federal to all state. And that's important because it allows us to use those funds as matching funds for our federal funds that we've received because we have federal requirements. However, in order to use those Washington funds, there must be a matching contribution from Oregon at that same time. So in the future, um, anything that we can do that will help Oregon match Washington in the same timeline or similar uh would be great in in terms of finishing the the capital stack of the bridge. So, yay. Um, and then just related to that, um, anything that also helps uh bring funds forward in time uh also helps the fund meet liquidity things and funding things, so we don't have to creatively um adjust money around and make the project cost more than it needs to. So that, expect that to be a thing coming up in the near future.
Anything else that I forgot for the good of the order? We are adjourned. Thank you.